Hey, Mark, we're ready to start if you want to hit record. Thanks.
We're all set, good to go.
All right, well, welcome everyone to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. Yay, Budget Day. Can we call to order?
Michelle Austin, I don't see her yet. Eric Montiel?
Here.
Steven, I don't see Steven yet. Carl Adams?
Here.
Brenda Hubka?
Here.
Erin Martinez is not here yet. Camille Keys?
President.
Noah Kaplan?
Here.
And Chair Hagerty?
Here. Did you get confirmation that we are recording? Because I just saw. Yeah, okay, thank you. Sure we're all official? Don't need to start over. All right, have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. If I could get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Great, if we can call for a vote?
Eric?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Noah?
Aye.
And Chair Hagerty?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
All righty, we'll now open the public forum. If we have any need for a public forum today?
We do not have anyone that I've seen.
All right, well, then we will go on to the next item on the agenda, just moving right along. Thank you, Ms. Nolan, for coming today to talk about the capital improvement project scoring tool. I believe you're doing, I guess I would like to have a very quick presentation of this. I think, you know, we had a large or long discussion last meeting to, you know, discuss the process of the tool and what it was or was not. We all had the opportunity to go through and rank the projects as we felt were priorities, both from us, but based on the information that was provided. I know there were still some challenges with use of the spreadsheet. I understand the concept of the spreadsheet. I have, you know, some questions in general. I think getting a, maybe a quick update on what you would like to talk about today, but I really want to make sure that we're spending the most of the time today going through and actually developing the budget to make sure that we can stay on our schedule to move forward with presenting this to council. So with that, I will turn it over.
Great, thank you. So good evening. I'm Tim Dodd, I'm the Deputy City Manager. So it's good to be with all of you tonight. I'm joined by Jenny Nolan, who is our Budget Administrator in our Finance Department, as well as Finance Director Kevin Ingles, who's behind us. So as the Chair mentioned, we did want to provide you with as much information as you want. So there, thank you to Ms. Fenton for putting quite a bit of information to your packet. We do have a PowerPoint pulled up. My plan is to not go through it slide by slide. I'm just going to go through a few key bullet points and then see what questions you have, and then we're happy to kind of stop and go through slides if you would like. So I just want to kind of highlight how we got here. So obviously, doing a CIP process is one of the most important things that cities do, particularly as part of the budget process. I've worked for a few cities and we were very lucky to have a consultant unnamed Emily Snyder, who works for a company called Standec that does a lot of this and does a lot of financial advising to cities, including Inglewood on a variety of topics. And Ms. Snyder had worked for the city of Denver, as well as other cities, and helped to build out these kinds of processes. And if there was a perfect way to do it, every city in America would do it. But there is not one way to do it. There is a variety of ways. We really set out to try to be as user-friendly as we could, and we also wanted to make sure we were creating a process that would engage stakeholders and get their feedback, and that ultimately would be able to provide recommendations to council that were based on a variety of factors, namely their priorities. So as you may know, the city council adopts every year an updated strategic plan. There's eight outcomes that they prioritize each year, and so we really wanted to make sure that recommendations fed into that. So we started working with Ms. Snyder at Standec in April of 2023. She helped us make a few small changes to the process for the 2024 budget. We did a check-in with council on that. We then spent basically the better part of last summer having multiple check-ins, which culminated in Ms. Snyder coming back this past winter to council. She checked in multiple times. She watched your meetings a few times. She watched other board and commission meetings, watched council meetings. We also had internal staff meetings about this. So there were many inputs. One thing I do want to point out is that she did create a survey that went to all five boards and commissions, including yours, that weigh in on CIPs, and we sent it out to 35 board and commission members. We did receive 10 responses. We estimate that four of those responses came from this board. The survey was launched in July and it was open through July 12th, and it was open through July 21st. And then we did, I think, keep it open a few days later to get more responses. She watched two of your meetings on May 9th and May 23rd of last year to get kind of an understanding of how you did the process. And so she did a checkpoint with us before the 2024 process, helped us a little bit with it, and then collected all that data and feedback, and then helped us make some additional changes going into this year. We know that it's not perfect. We love your feedback. I know Ms. Nolan had sent materials to you during the year, and definitely any feedback you'd like to give us tonight, or at other points, we'd be great to hear. One thing that we've heard loud and clear already this year is not necessarily the questions in the tool, but the structure of the tool in Excel may not be the most user-friendly, and so we already have plans to change that to a survey format for next year. So do you have anything you want to add?
No, oops. Thanks. No, just if you have any other follow-up questions regarding the budget or the workbook, I'm happy to answer any of those questions.
And thank you, appreciate the summary and providing the information, you know, noting from, the information that's provided was from last year, from 2023, when this process was undertaken, and some of the feedback that was given, and I think brought back to your team and brought back to city council at that point. I know that there were changes made. I think the information that's there, it's important to understand why we're ranking things. I think the format of it is a little bit challenging, and I hope that maybe once we get through this process, we can go through and figure out if there's a way to make it more straightforward and easier for those to use. I know I sent some comments back to Nancy, and I'm sure she passed those on to you. I'm guessing others might have provided some input as well. And again, I think we appreciate the effort that's put in. Like you said, there's no perfect way to do this. It's a matter of trying to make sure that everyone's on the same page with the understanding of what we're trying to get out of it, which is ultimately a budget that we can present to council. So before you, I guess, go further, are there any other questions, comments that others want to ask about the tools that, kind of the question now? Go ahead, no.
Yeah, so I am one of the folks that did not complete the spreadsheet, and it had nothing to do with being comfortable with Excel. I'm perfectly comfortable in Excel, could have filled out the tool. What I struggled with was that the criteria that we were being asked to rank them on were, you know, were sort of, I guess, decided in advance around the, you know, what the rubric was going to look like. And I know that that was presented at the meeting, but we didn't have that sort of to look at closely in advance to sort of inform the questions that we asked. And so as I started to fill it out, I felt like I was essentially just kind of regurgitating the information that I was given, and that there wasn't really room for me to express my priorities around which of the criteria, to me, are most important, or is there something else that is most important? So for example, I look at how this came out, and I see, you know, things like public art, for example, rating low, you know, being low on this list, which makes sense to me in connection with, does it impact safety? Does it have an economic impact, right? Those specific criteria. But for me, I would like public art to be something that we prioritize over, you know, some of the other things on the list. But I didn't feel like there was a way for me to express that using the tool, because I would have had to say, you know, in order to rank it higher, public art impacts safety. Like, I would have had to just make up numbers in order to give it a higher priority, because the the benefits that flow from public art aren't necessarily reflected in those criteria. So that was ultimately what led me to not choose to complete the tool, was that I just, I didn't feel like what I was doing was accurately reflecting my prioritization of what I think the city should be focusing on in the budget priorities.
I appreciate that information, and I would anticipate or hope that you maybe had shared those comments with the team at that point, or is this the first time you're sharing that, which is fine, too. But if not, could you document those a little bit, then share those along? I think that would be beneficial to everybody.
Sure. I mean, I sent an email to Nancy, which I think she also included Brian on that, but I'm happy to elaborate a little bit more and provide, yeah, that feedback and additional feedback.
If it's okay, if I just just on really quickly, I think that's a great point. I think we tried our best, you know, to create a set of criteria that were best based on feedback that we received from council and various other points of the process. And I hope I'm not speaking out of term, but we did this last year internally as a committee, and council definitely appreciated getting copies of individual score sheets and also tallied score sheets. But we also created basically a cover memo that kind of created a summation of our recommendations. And so I think it's within your purview, you know, if you wanted, in addition to submitting your score sheets, to have some kind of, you know, transmittal memo or cover memo that maybe addressed some of those concerns, but also maybe just highlighted some of the ideas that the Planning and Zoning Commission wants to highlight. I don't know why you couldn't do that, so.
Thank you.
Others with questions, comments, concerns? Okay, go ahead, Brenda.
On his topic. Is it, it's on, right? Yeah, I got too many, got all this paperwork. To his comment, I did rank based on the criteria we were provided with, assuming that's what council wanted, that we, so that's, and I was specifically using just that criteria. So I took it to mean that Inglewood is so broke that we have to really decide what's important based for our infrastructure and safety and everything else. I hope we can find room for some art tonight, or what have you, but that's how I took this, and I've been thinking about that ever since. So that's, I'll leave it there.
And maybe that could be, maybe just briefly, again, I don't want to beleaguer this. I want to get through what we actually need to get through, because I feel like that's probably going to take us a long enough time tonight, so I'd love to maybe have a follow-up on this. But what, I believe that these criteria were developed with councils and those weightings and rankings and things, not the rankings, because we've made those rankings, but the weightings and the actual criteria itself were developed by council?
Yes, they had them put in the process. But as Ms. Hubka mentioned, so in our strategic plan, we have eight, what we call, outcome areas. So the safety and transportation outcome areas were, so they do a retreat every January, and as part of the retreat, they prioritize the eight areas, and so those transportation, infrastructure, and not in this order, and safety were the top priorities that they set. So that was why it was carried that way.
Okay. Well, and again, the good news is there's a certain percentage that has to go to public art, so in that context, at least, we're going to have, we're going to get something in there now. So with that, any, did you want, are there any other items that you wanted to highlight on this tonight?
No, we really just heard there were concerns, and so we wanted to make sure they were heard and addressed.
Yeah, and I think there's a way to make the same tool simpler. So, I mean, I'd love to sit down after at some other point in time, have another meeting. I'm sure others would be willing to brainstorm with that. Also, and I'm sure you've thought of things, and they're sure I'm thinking of things that are simpler, that I go like, well, we can't do it because of this, this, this. So totally understand that. It's just a matter of making it so I think that we can all feel like we are being reflective of what actually is going to be a priority for us, because I did feel a little bit, as I was putting it through, again, you know, the transportation criteria, well, if it wasn't a transportation project, then this had to be a zero, right, and, or for that particular criteria. So, you know, just kind of understanding a little bit more on things like that. So with that, unless there's any other items that you'd like to touch on?
Just to say that after this, so happy to get feedback in any way from all of you, but when this process wraps up again, we are going to do another diagnostics. We will be doing another survey. If you'd like us to come back and kind of do more of like a focus group session with you and get your feedback that way, we're more than happy to do it. But yes, we already are planning on using Ms. Snyder and Standec again to do more of a diagnostic and then come back to council again, probably next fall or early winter, with other recommendations for modifications.
Yeah, and recognizing that this is the first full year of kind of trying to implement it, so there are going to be some bumps and some things that we'd like to go through. I guess I do want to reiterate with the last meeting that we had, I think the intention was that we were going to be going through the spreadsheet that we'd all have together, which we weren't able to do at that time, but we're kind of on now the crunch of being able to get it done and get it in. So you know, I think there's some opportunities for next year that, you know, like with everything, it'll be a little better next year, and, you know, one year it might even be perfect, but we'll take better every year, right? And thank you also for coming back down. I know, again, this is late in the evening, so we do appreciate your time.
No problem, thank you.
Okay. So with that, I guess, would, can we go ahead and, I guess, bring up the spreadsheet, and thank you, Nancy, for also helping compile this information into the large format spreadsheet that everyone has in front of them, that, maybe can you confirm these were all put together by the ranking? They're now in order of the ranking that kind of came out from. Is this just our rankings, or is this everyone that completed the tool or used the tool?
I believe it's just the planning commission's ranking.
Four of us?
Six of us.
Six of us?
Yeah.
Yes, six of you completed it. So if I could ask Ms. Nolan real quick, Jenny?
Ms. Nolan.
Could I ask you a quick question on the spreadsheet? So the department ranking, is that directors, or is that the compilation of the commissioners who scored?
This is last year's?
No, this is this year's. Okay, thank you. Okay, but this isn't the, the department rankings, not the commissioners' score?
Yeah, as I say, I think we might want to get this on recorded, so if you could maybe repeat, maybe what each one of, yeah, that'd be good.
So Nancy, what tab are you on? This is looking different.
This is just their combined scores?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Oh, so this is the department, this is the
This is the commissions.
This commissions.
So is that department ranking, the commission ranking?
No, that very first criteria, it's dependent on the department
This one?
Scoring, score. So it's basically, the commission is just confirming the department's score.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, yes, Chair, I sorted these based on the commissioners' scores and how it brought it up, and these are in the order of priority based on that.
So can you confirm, just to make sure I'm understanding, is department ranking our ranking, or is that, it's not, so our ranking is the total and the average total?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, the average score is your ranking. And this is the total of everybody's, including directors, I believe? And that's the director's score? Sorry, guys. Yes, this is based on the combined, when I put the
One other question I'll ask is what is our final number that we're also shooting for, just whenever you get, after you've gone through this?
I believe it's 11 million, which includes the contingency, correct? Oh, excuse me, 9 million. That's why we have Jenny here.
I thought she just found us 2 million, is that not?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the number?
Oh, CIP workbooks.
Right.
So here's all theirs, and here's the master. Okay, we're getting there, guys.
Do you know the number? I think they were
I believe it was 9 million.
Nine right on, or?
Because the department ranking is one of the criteria. You know, you've got department, infrastructure, level bar.
So here's where their scores are.
How many spreadsheets were turned in?
Six.
Six spreadsheets returned in. From planning zone, good point, yeah.
So it's fairly good average, then?
Yeah, I mean, it's quorum.
I sorted, that's, yeah, I believe that's what I did. Yeah, pavement maintenance.
Okay, so then I'm wondering, did we, so let's go back over here. Go over to the right. So were you pulling in this information?
If that was
Or over, oh, here.
No, I was here.
Or were you using this total?
No, I was using this, because that's where the scores were.
Okay.
This is what you told me to copy and paste in over there.
Okay, so then this, it would just be their score, it wouldn't be the department.
That's right. So, okay, thank you, Jenny. Yeah, so that department ranking is actually the the commission's ranking, sorry.
Based on that, oh, based on, sorry.
Sorry, Nancy, can you repeat that one more time, just to make sure we're all understanding and hearing and listening?
So the department ranking column in column K, that's going to be the commission's members' average score, based on that criteria, criteria on department ranking? So this might be a little bit confusing.
We couldn't change department ranking?
Correct.
So that's, in essence, then the department ranking, not our ranking?
Correct.
Okay, so that's just another, so because of some of the macros, it's kind of hard to see everything that's on this spreadsheet, so the first few rows of the spreadsheet, you can't look at. And I'm talking about the planning and commission master CIP tool, but I believe that those first couple rows are the departments' rankings that we could not change. Is that correct, Nancy? Jenny, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And so those numbers, then, our rankings for the infrastructure, safety, transportation, economic impact, urgency, project use, service level impact, operating impacts, and leveraging of outside funding sources, all combined together to get the total, which is the furthest row. Total of the average, I think, or, we'll come up to saying, because it's just going to divide it. Looking at this, this all is in order, we're both a total and the average total.
So that first spreadsheet that we're looking at, it's in a little bit of a different format than the budget workbook, or the prioritization workbook that we're looking at right now. So that department ranking of that 1.8 is just that one criteria based on the department's ranking. Then you've got this total on the other spreadsheet that shows, you know, 11 on this very first row. Yeah, so then if you scroll back over, you'll see that 11.1, and then your average score is going to be based on the total score of all the members who completed the workbook or the worksheet, and divided by six, by the number of submitted responses, and that gets you to your average score of 1.85. And that would be for all the criteria, all 10 criteria scores.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, I think understanding what each of the rankings are, so again, department ranking, they're in row K, is by others. The ranking for infrastructure, safety, transportation, economic impact, urgency, project use, service level impact, operating impacts, leveraging of outside funding resources are all the rankings that the planning zoning commission was able to input.
Correct. That total in column U would be the total of all the commission members' responses.
So I guess maybe one thing to think about moving forward is, then our rankings are also then skewed by the department, however that is interpreted, right, that scoring goes into, even though we're scoring them ourselves, that is being, impacts our scoring as well.
Correct, because that defaulted as, at the department score.
Okay, as long as we're all understanding. Okay, so from there, Nancy, I believe, has the request for 2025 input right now. Can we get the exact number that we are shooting for, for our final budgetary number?
9 million, correct. 9 million.
Right on the number, like right at, right, 9.0? Okay.
And if you scroll down here, you can see you have 15 million.
Yep, only need to cut about 30%. $6 million. Let's get to work. Okay? So with that, I think the way that we have done this in previous years is we've really gone line by line on these items, talked about, you know, what our priorities are. I think the intent of using this tool is to help us maybe understand which of these items were a higher priority than others, but then recognizing that we have 33% of the budget terry asked to cut out of here, we then need to start making some adjustments to these numbers. One thing, again, that I would like to see, and that I know we've asked for before, is what did we approve in '24, to help maybe get us a better understanding of what was approved in '24, what has been spent in '23 or '24, to kind of help understand, you know, the necessities of these, because, again, if we had unlimited funds, we'd fund all of it for the city, but we have to make some decisions here at some place, way, shape, or form. So, but with that, pavement maintenance, I think probably everyone who drives understands that's an important one. But, you know, a request of 500,000, I basically, I'm going to start walking down these. If anybody wants to talk about any one, yeah, go ahead, then we'll do that, and then just kind of continue on with that. Thank you. Go ahead, no.
So just to make sure the process is kind of as efficient as possible. So, just to make sure the process is kind of as efficient as possible, I think realistically, not everything on this list can be cut, so, right? And, you know, so let's start with facilities and operations at $2 million. Like, even though we're talking about the capital budget, facilities and operations is facilities and operations. I mean, it's money that is needed for just sort of very standard day-to-day, and that's $2 million towards our, you know, 9. So, like, if, in reality, that $2 million is essentially fixed and can't be adjusted, because that's just what's required to maintain, then I think we need to start with, like, what is the actual baseline of where we can have input on these things? Because not all of them, I think, are truly, like, capital investments that we could choose to make or not make.
You bring up a good point, we probably have some things that we need to, to look at closer than, that we're going to have a little more flexibility over others. So the, the large spreadsheets, that just calls out property, project name, estimated project cost, and then you flip it over, has that 2,58,000 number, which is what comes up on the facilities and operations. So it is broken down, I think there are probably some items that we could, you know, pull in, pull out, you know, and be able to discuss. The other, I think, big one, as we've noted before, is the energy efficient projects. I think all of us would like to be more energy efficient, I think there's a certain responsibility for us to be more energy efficient, but might be able to kind of pull out some of those as well. I think those, there's a breakdown in one of these documents here on those, on the email one from Victor Rochelle. That's the year out request. I believe this has the $3 million, I'm burning it. Does maybe staff or someone know where that $3 million, number 3.85 comes from? If there's a spreadsheet that documents that? That's eight point, yeah, I thought that, that was the one I was thinking also, but... There was a, that's the total prices versus, I think it's in the spreadsheet, or in the request here someplace. Didn't mean to cut you off there, Noah, if you, if you want to talk about the facilities and operations first, I'm happy to do that, and then maybe we can come back to the energy efficient ones?
No, I mean, I think I was just saying that I, I think it's important, rather than going, so, just to reiterate what I said before and add a little bit, I think if we go down this list starting from the top, we're obviously starting with a lot of road-related items, because we were asked to rate infrastructure, safety, transportation, so road projects necessarily scored high. But I think realistically, there are items on this list that are more and less flexible than others. And I think, rather than going from the top down, it might make sense to start with trying to get some understanding on which items are sort of least flexible, that we can sort of take off the table as things that we could adjust. That way, we're not spending time focusing on things where there's not, you know, really an ability to influence those. I don't know what those are, I'm just saying, that's my sense, looking at this list, is that there are some things that are more discretionary, and some things that are less discretionary on this list. And I don't want us to spend a lot of time focused on things that are essentially non-discretionary.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I, I think I would lean towards the, if we're going to try to get some maybe big wins first, looking at the energy compliance ones, which is summarized on page 50 of this larger packet, that kind of shows the $8.5 million total cost and the 3.85 million contribution. And those are then further broken down on the email from year out, energy of the 8.35 million. I'm guessing that's the 8.5 total cost. And then kind of a breakdown of, of return on investment for, for those items. I thought last time we had a little bit of a more detailed breakdown, but I think that's a good place to, to start with those, to look at, you know, are there items on there that we think maybe we could implement, maybe a few of them, you know? Is LED lighting at 570,000 worth it, is, is solar, you know? Where maybe the return on investment might not be quite as much, but, you know, you're, you're cutting out your electric bill. I mean, you have $65,000 savings on $2.9 million. Yeah. Any, yeah, that's this email here, the, the three packets.
If I may, I think one way we could really, it's not a lot for the energy. We, we're going to start with energy and not the facilities one, you want to start with energy?
Let's start with energy, yeah, three, let's go with the big one, $3 million, yeah.
Yeah, just $3 million. Out of this $3 million, now see, we've got 8 million here, 9 million over here, and 3 million over here. So that is very confusing. I would say right away, though, for both facilities and this, take anything out of the Civic Center. I believe, I think, I, I'm just a big advocate for getting out of here and selling this building, that's for one. And it's got a lot of problems, so it may happen.
Unfortunately, I think that's, that's 160,000 out of that. It is something, thank you.
So I would say 100, minus 160 right there, off that total.
It, it wouldn't take 160 out of the 3.5 million necessarily, because that 160 is the total project cost, including the grant funds, the other funds that were available.
Where's the 160 anyway?
That's, the 170-ish is the total site cost for the Civic Center in the energy efficient project.
Right, that would be out of this 3 million.
It wouldn't.
Why?
Because the 3 million is the city's contribution, and then the overall project cost is significantly higher.
We'd still be taking some money out, though.
Some.
Some, but you don't, we don't know how.
But I, I think we're going to have to be pretty damn close to zero on the energy efficiency. I think really more the question is, are there ones that we want to put in? And I think we have a new member, welcome. Do we have to bring in or swear in or anything like that? We have a new member, do we need to do anything?
Somebody join?
Yeah, I marked it in, in the notes, at the time Stephen entered, so we're good.
Okay, sounds great, welcome. We'll do more formal introductions after, great. So, yeah, I mean, I think the question for me is, are any of these energy efficiency items, ones that we want to push hard enough to put into this year's budget? I would love to put them all in, I have a hard time with all the other requests, putting these on top of things that just need to be done. I'd love to be more energy efficient, I'd love to have solar on all the buildings, to be able to use that for a long-term process. But when we're talking about whether I want to do solar or fixed bridges, it's not really a question for, for me on that side.
What I understood from the previous presentations was that there's at least some of the supplemental funding that would not be available in future years. And that's a big part of why, even with this tight budget situation, that, that was included for, because it's part of the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, or whatever, you know, and, and the federal piece might not be available for future years, if I remember from prior presentations correctly.
I, I think the, the question was, there wasn't a clear indication of how much we would get back. Is there, does the staff have any information about if there's, would any of these grants not be available in future years?
We don't have that information, so that would have been a question for the directors.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think, I think in a lot of ways, we asked that question, but I don't know that we've gotten that information, and... So, I, I think, I know, I, I understand what you are asking, I think it's a legitimate question. I know they said they did not have a clear indication of which grants we would even apply, or we'd be able to qualify for. I think you're right, there probably is more money out right now than there is in other places, but I'm not sure if that's something we'd be able to quantify, I think today is, is probably the bigger question. So with that, Nancy, is there, is it possible that you could bring up one of these two year out documents, just so we could all be looking at that? Or we could at least all pull it up on, in front of us here?
Which document, I'm sorry?
The email from Victor Rochelle, that, that has the year out summary.
Okay, give me one second.
Which, again, I, I hope I'm not the only one that thought that was like a projection for like a year out and not an actual company. It confused me for a few moments.
Is it this document?
Yeah, I think that will, that will be good. So this is, again, it's, it's a little confusing on why this one totals to 9.6 versus the 8 million on the other, 8.3 in the other side. But I think this generally does give an understanding of which items are being requested at which locations, which I think is important. So, looking at, okay, maybe it's better to, again, look at our paper here, because I think that's going to be harder to see than I was expecting. You know, the Civic Center, I think Brenda had noted, I agree with, probably should be out. So the Rec Center has about $4.3 million in requests for the Rec Center. I think it's something, you know, probably would be a good place to invest money, but, you know, would a million dollars there, you know, make a difference to, to put the solar on?
Do we have an idea of how much money is, as far as a percentage goes, that spending $4.3 million on the Rec Center is going to save the city of Inglewood annually? Because if I remember from the last meeting, it seems like it was under 5%. So if you're going to spend $4.3 million to save $200,000, my opinion is that it doesn't make much sense to do that from a, from a cost savings standpoint. That takes 20 years to, to recoup the investment. There's, there, there really isn't a return on the investment there.
Yeah, I agree, Erica, and I think I understand what you're saying. I think, Brenda, were you going to say something also?
I was going to say, if we were to put anything at the Rec Center, I think maybe HVAC upgrade would be, would be impacting, would, would help that, and I thought they were doing a new heater this year, but...
I believe under the facilities one, there's another, and that was, that was a question that someone asked last meeting, whether there, there was two HVACs and whether they were separate or not. So Inglewood Rec Center, yeah, they're putting a new boiler. One of the requests for the, of the $2 million request is new boilers and HVAC units and control systems on there. So there's another request for just HVAC system updates, which would be separate from these energy efficient upgrades.
We wouldn't do both, though, would we?
I, I doubt it.
I doubt it.
Let me rephrase, I, I don't think so, I don't know that there is, I don't know that, if you can do, though, the energy efficient one without doing the other, I guess might be part of, part of the issue.
Well, I would hope that an HVAC upgrade at the Rec Center is not a boiler, you know? And it is a $1.3 million ask for, on, on the, on the matrix, the Rec Center HVAC upgrade is a $2 million ask. I would think that that it would be able to cancel out the facilities request for the HVAC, I would think. Because anything, an HVAC upgrade is definitely not a boiler, I swear to God, it can't be.
I, I think if you look at the facilities sheet, the projects that are included in year out are pulled out from, so, Inglewood Rec Center HVAC units, 22,000, in the year out scope, yes. So that 22,000 appears in the far right column, not the second from the right column, which is where the total for the facilities and operations program comes from. So that's not sort of double counted there.
Yeah, that's right, they did say that, they said that last time. So this column says potential year out project, so that, those would not be double dipping, if you will. They are not redundant, they're both, well, let me rephrase, the Inglewood Rec Center upgrades from the facility plan are being requested. In addition to those, there's additional HVAC units as part of the energy efficiency that would be requested. So it's not even a potential savings on, on the energy efficiency. Go ahead, Camille.
I'm just wondering if there were any energy upgrades done last year or any previous years?
I don't believe those were in the scope or the request last year, I don't know if anybody else has recollection of that. I have my spreadsheet from last year, and I don't recall seeing it.
I can swear the Rec Center has solar panels. This is just would be getting them more, or updated, doesn't it?
Mr. Dodd, yeah?
Yeah, so I think there have been some projects that have been in years past, but no, there were none done last year. So when council got, when the city got $8.7 million in ARPA, we set up American Investment, or Co-React, yeah. We set aside about $200,000 for kind of a study that eventually went into doing this. And so we really haven't had a lot of movement since then. So this was really an engagement with a large-scale company, and looking at it from a very holistic point of view. So there have been, like, there are solar panels in this building, there are some on some other buildings, but nothing that's been done in the last few years, so...
And I guess maybe to follow up on that, sorry, Mr. Dodd. Was there any guidelines given to that consultant about, you know, what the scale, the scope was? Or was it, hey, look at everything we could possibly do at any point in time?
Yeah, I think it was really to look at every, it was to look at possibilities and try as much as possible to map them to what we understood to be our capital needs of our different buildings. So, you know, I was, I was in one of the meetings, I think there were several, but for example, it was looking at, you know, different buildings and how long they had been here, what some of the ideas we had for the future, and also some of the other projects that Public Works was putting forward around renovations, and how those would map into that.
Thank you.
So I'm wondering, based on that, if there might be some opportunity for staggering some of these projects, because I think it would be a bit of a loss to not move forward at all on any sort of energy efficiency projects. But maybe the budget doesn't have enough for everything?
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I'm looking at here on this, the facility planning on the $2.58 million request, a million of those are potential year out projects, right? So are those maybe the ones that we, that have that overlap, that have that opportunity for, for both? Maybe are the ones that we look at presenting to, to move forward out of the $2 million one? Maybe we change that to 1117, so they can do the energy efficient ones out of there, and be able to utilize as much possible, but, yeah.
I agree with that, use this sheet to figure out a number that we can, for the energy efficient. I, I think that's what I'm, what I'm hearing from, that these would be the best projects for the energy efficiency, and would get us a little lower than the 3 million that I don't think we can commit to this year.
And the energy, the energy efficient line item did come up as the number 12 ranked one versus the facilities and operation coming up at 17th. Again, for, for what that's worth, at least, is we're considering, you know, what's more important to, to all of us here. So, I mean, I think the way I would like to maybe start with online, I'm sorry, ranked 11th, not 12th, would be proposing that 3.85 million goes to 117, 111... would be proposing that 3.85 million goes to 117, 1117, 1.1, yeah, that number, thank you. Nancy?
Okay, so what's the number?
And then three zeros, yeah, 1,117,000, yep.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that is this, where did you get the 111?
Um, that is, no, that's, so these are potential year-out projects.
Oh, I see, that's right.
Yes. Does that make sense to others? Yeah, everyone feels good about that. So, does that then, in my opinion, that zeroes out the $2 million ask as well? Uh, yeah, the 2058.
Could you give me a line?
Uh, that you just scrolled by, it was line number...
Oh, right here, line 19?
19, or 18 or 19?
Rank seven, this one?
So many lines.
Facilities and operations, Chair?
Yes.
Okay, and you want to zero that out?
Yeah, if we, yeah, I'm kind of curious, what happens if we zero that out?
Oh, $2 million?
Well, because technically speaking, that's still 1.117 out of that, but it's going towards, it's going towards a higher number of the year-out numbers. Does that make sense?
It does, it's just, that's assuming that everything in facilities and operations does have that duplicate.
There's, there's no duplicate there, there, it's two separate sums.
Yeah, and Brenda, you might want to turn your, your, and so, okay, looking at this spreadsheet again. These are the facilities and operations numbers that are being requested of 2.58, $2,585,000. Out of these 2, $2,585,000, 1.17 are potential year-out projects that are energy efficient.
No, that, that's not correct. So, there's the column that says estimated project cost, which totals to 3.1 million.
Okay.
That 3.1 million is the 2 million for the facilities and operations line, and then also the 1.1 million for potential year-out projects. Those two columns are separate of each other. So, every project that is here is accounted either in facilities and operations or in potential year-out projects. Those, but they're, those are mutually exclusive lists.
I'm looking at exactly what you're saying now, and I think I understand. All right, no, that stinks.
I, I think, i-if we could, I mean, maybe, I think, the a way to address this potentially is, it probably doesn't make sense for us to sort of go line by line through the year-out projects or through the facilities and, and operations projects. But I'm wondering if maybe we just say, for example, it would be our preference that the budget, you know, reduce the amount of the energy efficient projects by half, you know, and then...
Let them figure out.
Yeah, let the, you know, let the city staff, the people who actually have a better visibility into what's most urgent, what's going to have the biggest bang for the buck, where the grant funds are available, do that internal prioritization, but for me, I think I would like to say that, given how much we have to cut here, 3.8 million for the energy efficient projects is too much. Like, I think it should be a priority, but that number is too big. I think we should just bring it down, but I don't, I'm not the right person to say how to bring it down, right?
That's what you get to be here for, that's...
That's why we're here, we're going to bring it down.
Yeah.
Well, I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission, not the Budget Advisory Commission or the Sustainability Commission, so...
But part of what, you know, our, our joy is, is this commission, is we get to kick this first crack. We do not have the final say of it, but we definitely are, are the ones who are supposed to come up with, what is that priority? And I, I agree with exactly what you're saying, no, how does the 1.117 feel for that number then, for that first one? Bring it down from 3 million to a number that is reflective of here? Hold on a second, Brenda, yeah, Brenda, how, how does that feel to you, just to get that confirmation?
I haven't sort of, you know, matched between the spreadsheets to figure out what is and isn't, even if we can. I'm not even sure how much they sort of are presenting things in different ways, so it might not even be possible.
And I guess are you concerned?
I think that number is probably smaller than I would like it to be. I think we could, you know, like I said, you know, my, like, gut is just, could we get there with, you know, half of the 3.8 million? But, you know, again, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think, I guess, are you concerned that if we put a number that was that 1.17, then they thought that we would have to do these specific ones? As opposed to if we just say there's a round number for them to, to do? Or to use? Is that not your thought at all?
Again, I just, yeah, I, I don't know. I, I, we can work from that
As a starting point?
Yeah, how it impacts other things.
Okay, Brenda, yeah, uh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, the 17 plus the original facilities, leaving the facilities alone equals 3 million, right? Am I reading this correctly? Well, then I think that's, we could even leave facilities as is, 25, go down to the 17. This is fine. I think that would work.
I mean, we're still going to be quite a bit over. I think we're going to have to cut both of those, but I think as a starting point, the one, I, I feel like starting at 1117 is good. Did, Camille, or did any others have thoughts on that? I thought I saw some motion over there.
Um, so I did, well, I was just going to agree with that sentiment that I can look at all of these energy efficient initiatives, and I don't know how they interact. So, I, I would kind of agree with the idea of trying to give a number and then having staff allocate those funds in the best way possible with their expertise that I do not have.
Yeah, and I mean...
Chair, if you don't mind, if, if I could, and I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager to correct me if I'm wrong, but the recommendation that goes to the city manager includes your priorities. They don't have to stay in the same priority, and then you can change the amounts. And so, when the memo goes from our department to the city manager, it'll say, here are the commission's priorities. Let's just take pavement maintenance by area, and then the amount. You don't have to stay with the 500,000, you can increase it, you can decrease it. But by charter, that's the commission's charge. Did I get that correct, Tim?
That's correct.
Thanks.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure you got that correct. Okay, thank you for that confirmation, so.
And what Tim and I were talking about was, I think the council wants to see the data. Normally, what we do is, there's just a list of projects and dollar amounts for the recommendation for the commission, but the council members want to see why. Like, they want to see the data. That's where the scoring tool comes in. Rather than just getting your list and recommendations, they want to see why. They don't want the P&amp;Z's recommendation based on just if staff were to tell you, hey, score these projects this way, do this. They don't want that, otherwise, they would just reach out to staff and ask us our questions. So, they want the different commissions' ideas, because you all do different things in the city. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission looks at it from their realm, Budget Advisory Committee can look at it from their realm, each commission or, or board can look at it from their different realms. So, that's where you have to put on your P&amp;Z hat and think about these projects based on your role with the city and where you feel this money needs to go, not where staff tells you it needs to go. If it were up to us, at least in my previous roles as a director, I would want every single one of my projects funded, because that's why I put it out there. You guys are here to help make your recommendation on how do you trim that fat and say, okay, these are not going to go, this is something that can get pushed to next year, or I feel like, we feel like this is important, it needs to get pushed up this year, or, you know, that's how you guys make your recommendation. So, I just want to make that a little bit more clear, that this is your opinion, not, not staff's, not staff telling you where we feel like it should go. Because we feel like all these projects need to get funded, that's why they're here. You guys have the hard jobs next to council, doing the ultimately hard job of saying, well, this one's not going to happen, or it's going to get its funding reduced.
And based, based on, on Brian's comment, I think one thing we shouldn't cut is LED lighting. I think that really makes a big impact on the electricity bill for the city. And based on my experience, it will bring money back into the pipeline in the long, medium to long-term projects. So, if we do stick to the 1.1 million, it's probably half of that budget. But I think it'll, it'll really big, make a big impact in the, in the final numbers.
I think that's a good point, I'll let you go and then I'll, I'll...
Yeah, I just wanted to, Brian said it much better than I, I would, but I just want to emphasize that, yeah, council really is looking for input from the five boards. One thing to, that you're all aware of, of course, too, is that, so there's five that look at these, three of them are subject-specific. So, the library, parks and rec, and E-TAC, which are transportation advisory. So, it's really just, just this board, and then also the Budget Advisory Committee, they're looking at it from a holistic perspective. So, I think that's something that's really important as well. The other thing is, we really tried to focus this year on providing you with better project descriptions. So, hopefully, you received a packet or a booklet that had all that information. But what council is really looking for from you, we believe through this process, is, as Brian said, your input based on your role in this. It's not to be reacting to staff, you know, have, we all have our own opinions on things, we'd be happy to share, but that's not why we're here, that's not our role. It's really your role to be sharing as an advisory capacity with council what your opinions are.
Thank you for both those clarifications. And then, back to the, yeah, I think having some money towards the energy efficient projects, I think is important to all of us. I think we've recognized that. If there is a number that is put into the energy efficient projects, though, that then becomes staff's choice on how those get distributed, ultimately, right? That would, would council wouldn't dictate which projects it would end up going back as a bulk number to you all?
Yeah, council will provide direction on what, what they want to see, and then, you know, it's be staff's role to kind of carry that out through contracts and the procurement process.
Okay. Go ahead, Brenda.
With that said, we have this ranking here, and we ranked these by importance, and that's what council is going to want to know. First of all, that we've ranked it, and I, I would like us just to go by, just go down the list. And because that's the most, that's how we ranked it, so, because, based on this importance, if we wanted to, just theoretically, we could count up the column and stop at 9 million and then not fund anything else, because that is the point of ranking. And so, it's not start at the highest number and then drill down. Let's start, can we start at the top? And see if any of the first five we want to lower?
Could we actually do what Brenda just suggested and basically highlight that column until we get to 9 million, so we can know where that cutoff is right now?
Yeah, great. Does that make sense, Emerson? So, go ahead and select column, or cell E2. Uh, just that cell, yep, and then shift and hold down until you get right about, up a little bit, you're at a sum of 6.02 right now? Yeah, okay, right there. But I'm sorry, we're, we're going to 9 million, I'm sorry, I was at the, keep going down? So, yeah, if you actually just go ahead and select that cell and then hold the shift button, or you can do that, too. It's like, feels like Plinko or something like that. Uh, go up and a little further. That's 4.75, 0.76, keep going, keep going, 7, 8, okay, stop there? And then if you, what's that number, is that 892? It's a little fuzzy here, or my eyes are a little fuzzy. Okay, yeah, if you, well, okay.
And this is after the change to the energy efficient projects?
Yes, but is it also, did you zero out line?
Yes.
That did zero out line 17, though, which of, of 2 million.
We zeroed it out?
Yeah, it was my, I said that. Well, no, I agree, but...
But that's what, yeah.
So, at this point... Yeah.
Okay, so here's your 9 million, and that will adjust as we go up and down?
Yeah, as I say, except we did line out line 17.
Correct. So, is there something you want to put back into the zeroed out one?
So, that was at 2,580,000. That's, again, these facilities and operations. So, did you at one point wanted to put all $2 million back in? I feel like that's probably more than, than we can spend on this, but like, do we want to say, you know?
Let's take out this, some stuff for sure. If you notice the Civic Center, again, there, I'm picking on the Civic Center tonight.
I'm sorry, Ms. Upka, I can't, thank you.
I'm picking on the Civic Center again tonight. We do have LED lighting included then, the lighting upgrade for energy efficient. We can, that $600,000 is in, oh, with this security, no, that's, that's not line itemmed here.
So, why don't we, for maybe purposes of this, let's put it at 1.5 million for right now?
Which one, Chair?
For line 17, or line 17 or 18?
For facilities and operations?
Correct.
And you want it at what? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing. 1.5?
It's line 17 in our spreadsheet, is there a reason why that?
There's two 17s.
I just changed it.
Oh, there are two 17s in the spreadsheet, okay, thank you, no, no, that's, that's helpful.
So, I'm sorry, what did you want to change to, Chair?
Uh, 1.5 million.
Okay, thank you.
Um, which puts us then 1.5 million over if we get all the way down to line 33. Okay. So, if we were to then, if we wanted to just talk about numbers moving up, we'd have to go up. So, line 33. We'd probably have to go up to about line 27, if not a little bit higher.
So, it does appear that you had two rankings of 17, that's why.
Yeah, and that's fine. Could you make a subtotal at line 27? Under facility jack, generators, backup generators?
Is that where you would like it? I had it down below where, down...
Yeah, but then I put more money back in, so I think we need to make that adjustment, at least just for right now.
Okay.
So, we have 27, the first 27 in this, right? Is that what we have?
Right now, we're showing just over $9 million with the first 27 items included with a modified line 11 and a modified line 7, or second 17, line 18.
And we brought line 11, citywide facilities, energy efficient projects, down by 1.5 million to 2.3, to, to 2,300,000?
Which line was it? I'm sorry.
11?
We moved line 11 to 1,117,000.
Okay.
Go to you.
Just some brainstorming here. I know with the mess in, in Boston and the bridge and all that, I know that the federal government is going to start pitching in money to states to fix bridges and maintenance. So, maybe that's something we can think about. I don't know when all that's going to come out, but I know that the Transportation Secretary was talking about that, and it's going to be state, I mean, nationwide. So, maybe it's something we can leave on the back burner until all that is decided.
I, I think, I, I like the thoughts of that, and where else can we leverage money, right? I would probably be surprised if we could get that money next year. So, I think I would be hesitant to take away our, our road and, and bridge maintenance stuff for, for next year, but I love that idea moving forward, that it's something we would, would consider. I think the reality, though, is, you know, if we look at what we did for road and pavement last year, we did 500,000 for pavement maintenance by area, we did 150, 150,000 for road and bridge, which probably wasn't, you know, really enough. I, I would like to, to... which probably wasn't, you know, really enough. I, I would like to, to keep those numbers where they're at this year because I think either that or we're just deferring our maintenance more than we'd like to. Go ahead. Do you have a thought? Okay, Camille?
Not on that, but I was wondering how we feel about alley paving and that prioritization, prioritization.
Yeah, I would love to triple or quadruple or make that 10 times the number, but we've got 100,000 in there right now. Last year, we had moved up that to our third priority last year and we did, actually, I'm sorry, we made that one of our first priorities last year was $100,000 also for last year, which really, if I'm not mistaken, is only like a couple alleys, if I'm not mistaken, that cost. It's not a, yeah, it's, it doesn't go far.
There's alley maintenance.
Yep.
Near the top at 100,000. The alley paving is now below the cut.
Oh, thank you. I, I did see that as alley paving, you're right.
Alley paving has 500,000 asked, but is below the cut of where we would have things at the moment, I think.
Yeah. And the other thing that we have to note is line 36, art in public places, has to have 1%. So that number needs to be in, so we'll need to put in that 48,185 regardless of where we end up. It's 1% of just one of the budgets, I think. I forget which, which budget it is, but it's the, the 4 million out of the 9 million, if I'm not mistaken.
But is that 1% of the 48,185 dollars?
No, it's 1% of the overall budget of the 4 million dollars, so. The 48, I, I believe that 48,185 is the number that will, that we have to include.
Where's our line at right now?
Our line is at line, we're underneath the generators, line 27. But we're also 200,000 over at that line. So I think the question becomes, now that we have an idea of where we can get to, um, you know, approximately, I was going to try to look up the generators to see if I could figure out if that's a one or none kind of thing, like do, can we do a slightly smaller number for the generators or if that's all of them? I'll see if it's in this document here. But if not, or even if it is, maybe we can, now, now that we have an idea of again, where we're going to, we can go line by line and just talk about keep it, move it.
Oh, you want to do that?
Yeah, I, I'd like to do that if that works for everyone else. Okay. Okay. So there is, and just real quick, well, we'll get there when we get there. All right, pavement maintenance by area, $500,000 request this year. We gave 500,000 last year, or that was our recommendation last year. Any discussion? Move on. No, okay. Bridge repairs, $500,000 request. I believe we, what did we make that last year? Bridge repair, Roden Bridge? I feel like that was, is Roden Bridge a separate one? Yeah, that's a separate one. I think we, yeah, we took out, I'm sorry, we did, we put 500,000 in for Roden Bridge last year also. Actually, I'm sorry, we took out that as a recommendation last year. So I feel like it's probably something that's necessary. It's high, high ranking for both staff and for all of us. So maybe we keep that 500 for now. Roden Bridge maintenance materials, that's extra materials to go ahead and fix different bridges, 350,000. Last year, we put in Roden Bridge 150,000. So that's gone up by 50%, I'm sorry, by 100%. More than 100%. So, you know, it's probably something that is a need again, but maybe would we maybe, we're, we are going to still need to save about 200,000. Would we want to make that 300,000 instead of 350? We gave 100, we recommended 150 last year. I'm not sure what the final number was.
We don't know what we ended up spending, is what you're going to say, was what you're saying?
I don't believe I've seen that, um, numbers of what was the final recommendation for last year, the final budget numbers from last year. Okay. It, I think that'd be a good thing again to have next year when, when, when we're doing this. It'd be great.
So just so I'm clear, so I'm like a note, do you want, for next year, when you're doing this, do you want the approved amount for each line item or the recommended?
I would love to see the approved amount from really the last two years and then what was spent the last two years, I think would, would really help us figure out what is, what is the need, what is being used and how is it being used?
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so how would anybody feel about moving line three to 300,000 instead of 350?
I think moving it down to 300 is, is probably smart. We might even be able to cut another 25 or 50 out of that and make it 250 or 275. We can always go back and add it in after we get through some of their other line items.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know they, they've been requesting it 300, they requested 300 last year. We made it 150. I'd like to, let's keep it 300 maybe for now. If that's okay, and I, Eric, if we need, if we can come back, we'll, we'll come back to that one. Uh, security cameras. Uh, I think they actually asked for this one again last year and we did not fund it. It was a smaller ask last year, but I think it's a high ranking for, for everyone here. And if I'm not mistaken, that's a, maybe not a one-time thing. Not a one-time, but it's either all or none. So they're asking for 150 and 25 and then going down to 50. Maybe we can, maybe we do 100 there? Or is there a different number? Because their, it looks like the request does go down over years. So we could do 100 this year, 100 next year or something like that.
Can we pause for a second to find that in the packet?
It is line 58. Page 58 of the, of the larger packet. If I'm afraid, I think that's 58. Yep, 58. Oh, there's two page, sets of page numbers. That's 74 if you're looking at the side, but 58 in the actual bottom page number. So you got, yeah.
75 percent?
Uh, 74 if you're looking at this page number, 58 if you're looking at this page number. Does everyone have it?
So I'm assuming that once they change it, they change all these cameras next year, it's just the maintenance cost going forward, right?
Yeah, or potentially even more. I'm guessing these are probably multiple places.
Fewer cameras.
Yeah, maybe fewer cameras. That's, that's what I'm thinking. Maybe can we take 50 out of this and give them 100 this year or something along those lines or make it a different number altogether. But still fund it, yeah. Again, last year, they requested 25 and we did not recommend any money for it for last year.
Well, it doesn't say, I'd just as soon leave it because of the security concerns at the civic center. I'm afraid we're stuck with that for a while. And it just says, um, other areas where uh, facilities have been, security issues have been experienced. Additional storage will be necessary to meet retention requirements. And I mean server storage.
Correct.
So if we cut 50, we could, we'll just, it might now serve a purpose just to have fewer cameras. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, safety is a hard thing for me to cut also. If, if we all want to keep it at 150, maybe we just leave it and move on to the next one?
I'm also hesitant to cut that one because.
I'm sorry, Camille, can you put your mic on?
Sorry, um, hesitant to cut it because I would hate for something to happen in an area where they had wanted to update a camera and we didn't, weren't able to.
Okay, so it sounds like maybe let's leave that one and then move on to alley maintenance, which is 100 grand. We gave 100 grand last year, or recommended 100 grand last year.
Well, now this one we might be able to cut because we're doing something for the first time. And that is using the scrapings from the road as our, to put down on the alley. So unlike previous years, we're not having to go buy any material. Of course, there's costs associated that we've already budgeted for pavement maintenance, but we might be able to slash that bit and see how that goes.
I have a hard time cutting this one just because our alleys are in such bad shape. If we can go further than, than we have in previous years, I, I feel like I, I, that would be my thought. I'm open to, I'm definitely open to the conversation because we're going to, again, it's like when, yeah. Others, please.
The alley paving, I believe that 500,000 is one alley. And that's really, to my mind, it's, it's kind of insignificant. One alley, that's, by the time you get through the city doing one alley a year, you're gonna, they're going to be destroyed before you can turn around to the next. The ma, the maintenance, I think, you would maybe take the 500,000 from the paving and then add a thousand, 100,000 to the maintenance.
The alley paving is far enough down the road that it's below our current cutoff. So we wouldn't be able to add that in because it's at line 29. It's already over, over budget based on where it falls in, in the rankings. I, I like your thought on that, Carl. I will say that I think the intent is that when we do actually construct these the right way, they should last forever. I mean, you'll have to do maintenance on them, but it's not going to be what we have to deal with. Now, I, I, I would love to be able to actually pave all of these alleys, but I don't, that's a whole nother place. I don't think we're going to get, you, I don't think we're going to get anything in the alley paving this year. Just because it's below, yeah.
It'd be nice to get some paving on the alleys that are off of Broadway. There's, there are still quite a few alleys off of Broadway that need to be paved, really. That, that, that should be done, I think. And by the time you get out in the residential area, you're, it's going to be a while.
So, I mean, like I said, right now, I, I think what you're saying is we should move up alley paving into our numbers or figure out a way of funding alley paving in some way, but we're, right now, that's below the cutoff.
We don't really determine where it's been, I guess, so.
Well, the number that we're talking about right now is alley maintenance, not the alley paving.
The, the maintenance?
Yeah, we're talking about maintenance right now.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to find money for the maintenance.
Okay. You want more money for maintenance?
That's what I was thinking is take the paving out and add up to the maintenance and then.
But the paving's already out. It's below the cutoff right now. We're already over budget and the paving falls below that number.
Okay.
If you wanted to add numbers, that, money back in, then we'd be cutting it someplace else also.
Okay.
So for alley maintenance, what are, what are we saying?
I think we leave the alley maintenance at 100,000 dollars.
Okay.
I think it's really important, not only for the, the safety of people walking through there, but also for the, you know, the well-being of, of our vehicles.
Okay, great. Everyone okay?
Yeah, I'm, I agree with Eric.
Okay. Okay, next, patrol cars. So this was one, and if you remember, they, you know, kind of was a all or nothing, um, number. At the very end, I think he kind of noted, we could maybe do most of it and not all of it, but again, for our, our officers, our, our, you know, making sure that they have the equipment that they need, again, feels like a, a pretty important feature.
So what I remember, and I'm trying to find it in the packet and the packet is very large.
Okay.
The page numbers don't seem to line up. But the, um, there was a conversation about the reason that the number is so large is that the officers have asked for a like larger format device, which then requires replacing also the docks that go in the cars. And, you know, so this is essentially a full 100% replacement of the devices and the docks, rather than sort of just an annual replacement of, you know, devices that are, that are aging out. And it did sound like there was potentially some room to say, we could for less money than this, essentially continue standard replacement cycle of the devices we have and not have to replace the docks as well.
So it is line, or page 60 down here or 76 on the side?
Thank you.
I, I know what you're talking about, Noah, in that conversation. And I think here you also noted, maybe they could do some of them. I, I have a little bit of a hard time cutting that one.
Another idea here would be to find out if the company that's selling these would sort of do a, a replacement program because it's similar to what happens with computers. And they can sell those to other departments, you know, or maybe even overseas. But I think the company should be able to be like, hey, if we're going to replace all these units, we'll buy them back from you for X amount of money and we'll put that towards the new, the new models.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we'd be able to determine that tonight, but I mean, I think it's just maybe a good note to, to share. It's, it's a good thought. Brenda?
I was just going to say, I, I would leave it. Um, because we have a great need for employee retention in that area. And if that's what's going to make them happy, then by God, let's get to that.
I will say, I do have a note from our last meetings that could hold off part of patrol car for 25 into 26. So you know, do we leave it at 375 for right now? Or do we bring it to 325 and again, because we're going to, we're going to, eventually we're going to need to save some money here.
Yeah, we're going to have to spend some money here eventually. It says that the computers will reach the end of life in 2025 and, and support will no longer be provided, but they're currently working. I don't know, that's 2025.
It's a good note there.
Yeah, I think, I think, I, I think we need to keep that number where it is and, and keep the police officers properly, properly equipped with the technology they need in order to to help keep us safe.
Noah, do you have something?
Oh, sorry, I slipped on. I mean, I, I would say my preference here would be if there's a lower cost replacement option, then I would prefer to go that route. And it sounded like from the conversation at the last meeting that there is a lower cost replacement option and that this number is coming from taking the sort of premium option that the officers would prefer that requires replacing the docks, that we could replace the computers. And if they were the same size as the devices currently, we wouldn't have to replace the docks and that that was an option. So that would be my preference. I don't know what that number would be compared to this number. But that, again, that's just me, so.
Yeah, and I think there's that option or the option of holding some of it so that it sounds like they could deal with a smaller number here. I think we all understand that it's an important one. If it was a smaller number, what, are, are you saying hold off and completely no? Or are you saying to give it a smaller number?
No, I mean, I, I agree with what Eric said, you know, we need to replace devices that are reaching the end of their life, for sure. So like, having a budget for standard IT replacement is totally in line.
It's probably close to that 100,000 dollar number.
I feel like there is prob, and again, I don't know, I don't know what the difference is. But what I heard at the last meeting was that there was potentially room to bring this down by continuing to replace devices that are essentially, you know, same with same and not have to replace the docks as well. But this is an upgrade from what they're currently using at this number.
So you're proposing a number?
Like I said, I, I don't have that information, so I, I mean, you know, I, I could throw out a number, but it would just be out, out of my head, right? I mean, I could say, you know, it'd be great if this was 275 instead of 375. But again, I, I don't know what that difference is if you, you know, I mean, there, there are specific. there there are specific numbers here. If we go this route, it's 375. If we go this other route, it's something else, but I don't know what that something else is.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we leave it at 375 for right now? Let's can you highlight it, Nancy, as a number to come back to if we are still over? By the time we get down to line 27? And if we do, then we can provide a different number in that in that box. Does that seem reasonable, Noah? Okay, okay. Concrete utility share. It is. What's that?
What was last year's concrete?
Uh, we cut it. We we recommend.
Looking at all the concrete and I'm thinking, yeah, we need to cut here.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hupka. Could you please remember to turn your mic on so it's recorded?
I was. I was on.
Oh, okay.
I guess I was talking into my shoulder.
Okay, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
So you're saying cut it out completely? Cut all 350?
No, but I think we can narrow down both line items nine and 10, maybe fund those by half.
You mean eight and eight and seven and eight?
Or seven and eight, yeah. Is that right?
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess. Do you know, Brian, is there? The utility share is our share of that project, I guess. I would say because everybody pays into the concrete utility share unless you opt out. And then do we have a portion of that cost then?
I I don't know details on any of these projects.
On any of the projects, all right.
These are Public Works, IT, so I don't know those.
So this says cities and this is line page again, 30 here or 46 on the side. Cities contribution to the Concrete Utility Enterprise Fund for repairs. This is another one that, you know, I'd love to know what we spent so far or in previous years. You know, without knowing that, I feel like this is probably one. I don't. I don't want to get rid of ADA ramps on line eight, but I feel like cutting some numbers out of this concrete utility share, we cut all of it last year. Maybe we don't cut all of it this year, but maybe we go to 250 on this one. How does that feel to to folks? Good, 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 okay. So Nancy, line seven, concrete utility share, change that to 250K. Please, and thank you. All right, so concrete ADA program, concrete program ADA ramps, which I believe is just gonna be the page before. No, it's it wouldn't be that easy. Page after, thank you. So this is annual program to update ped bridges, 100 ramps. You know, I ADA ramps are not great. I'd love to have, especially with one of our largest employers in this in the city being the hospital. It feels like anything we can do to help improve the area around there and make the ADA ramps. And I know they've been working in that area, but I think as we continue to spread out and people kind of utilize the space around it and the importance of the reality of people who need ADA ramps when they're not there is real. Like, that's almost nonnegotiable. I feel like the ADA ramps is something that I'd like to try to keep in there. We put 200,000 in as our recommendation for last year, just as another note.
I will though that one of my favorite things about Inglewood is how accessible it is. And I think continuing to maintain that and improve it is really cool. So I would say we leave it as is also.
Any other thoughts on it, yeah? Keep it at 350 or or cut it a little bit or just keep it at 350?
I'd also like to try to keep it at 350.
Okay. Keep, keep, keep. Okay, moving on.
You mentioned the hospital. It's they're they're gonna tear out that whole Old Hampton pretty soon anyway. So I'm not sure what you're talking about. You were talking about the hospital?
Well, I'm just saying, is one of the largest employers, if I'm not mistaken, in the city. Craig and Swedish Hospital, you know, there's there's people that are needing handicap ramps. Now, obviously around there, they've been tearing up a lot of the ramps and replacing them with actual ADA ramps. I'd like to be able to expand that from there because there's a lot of people that are rehabbing there that are trying to, you know, walk, use the neighborhood and things like that. I think there's further that they can go to to do that. Is that the the question? Were you talking about Old Hampton Construction?
The hospital, they take care of their own stuff, basically.
Sure, on. I mean, I don't. If I had to guess, I I think the sidewalks there, they they probably rely, you know, unless it's something they're building or constructing the city to still maintain. I could be totally wrong on that. And I'm sure you're right, Carl, there probably are a lot of things that they they do because they want to make it better. But there are areas around there that are definitely out of their control.
I I thought you went past that, but I was I'm happy with a 250 on that one.
Uh, we we have 350 there right now.
Yeah, it the the description says it's 100 ramps of a total of 2,600 ramps throughout the city. Throughout the city of which roughly two thirds need to be upgraded to new ADA standards. So 100 ramps for 350, maybe we just do a few less ramps. Maybe we go down to 300.
Yeah, I mean, that that would be an option on this one. I I think as we're looking to again, try to save money last year, again, we did allocate towards that 200,000. So it would be a higher number. I I don't know that I I'd like to fund it as much as possible. I don't know if I feel like, you know, splitting hairs or anything. I mean, if we want to put it 300 because we're probably gonna need more money other places, I'm fine with that also.
The justice.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say the justification also says it's federally mandated. So I don't know if that makes it maybe higher priority.
Well, I would be anxious to slip something below that line back up. That's also important. We could do two things at one point, like the Emerald Ash Borer mitigation. That's 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 where I'm thinking, like, I'd like to find 50,000 for that. And we'd still be getting some ramps done. I mean, if it was against the law, we'd have all the ramps done already. You know, we've gotten a lot done. They're all done by my house. Um, I think the city's done it kind of on a priority area where there is the most walking, right? So we're we're headed out to the outline areas at this point, I think.
I know the it was pretty recent that they did the started going north of Swedish. So I think there's still plenty of opportunities up in in that area. I I again, I I feel like moving this down a little bit, we do a few less because it does say federally mandated to show ongoing improvements. So I think it just means that we need to continue putting money in towards it. So we probably shouldn't have cut it last year is really what it comes down to here. But, you know, it it's probably one that that would be good to keep. So maybe because it sounds like there's a little request to make it a little lower, maybe 300,000 in that one. How does that sound? Okay.
I'll go with 300, yeah.
All right, three. Do I hear 300? Going once, go into it. Okay, Nancy, line eight, 300,000, please. All right, moving on up to parking and rec parking lot maintenance. You know, I think the director gave a pretty good description of why this 80,000 is is necessary. It's ranking pretty high for for everyone here. I feel like, you know, we need to maintain our parking lots. And part of my question was, why are we paying for recreation center? Or not recreation center, if that makes sense, but like Pirates Cove or other place maintenance. But she did clarify again that we get money from Pirates Cove into the general fund each year. So it'd be, you know, it's kind of like they're paying us to to pay this back in some way. So she's asking for 80 grand, I think, you know, probably is a a good number to keep in there.
I agree. It's not a big marginal change anyway, so I think we that's fine.
Other thoughts, anyone?
I drive through the parking lot at Broken T Golf Course a couple of times a week, and I don't see much going on there. I don't see much damage, so. Maybe it's covered by all the cars that are there. I also notice that that people are drive through the parking lot pretty slow and and so forth. I wouldn't mind cutting it a little bit, but I don't think $80,000 is is gonna make or break the budget either way.
I agree that 80,000 doesn't have much to account, but it I feel like prioritizing parking over possibly finding a little bit room in the budget for something like the Emerald Ash Borer or something like that, that might be more. I don't know. I wouldn't mind cutting it a little bit.
Does 50 or 60,000 feel like are a good number then for that one?
Yeah, 50.
50, 50, 50, 50. All right, 50,000. 50,000. That's line nine, Nancy. 50,000, please.
And let's keep in mind, if we cut too much, we can always come back and and add it to where where we like it or where we feel we need it.
Okay, moving on to the citywide transportation plan. If I'm not mistaken, this is the line to implement the actual plan.
I can read it.
Oh, do you have it? Which line? Which page are you on?
So this is interesting. This is on 19 of the printed slide. For those of you with your packet. 19 of the packet, yes. That's the completion of a transportation master plan as part of the comprehensive master plan of all streets and intersections in the city to better anticipate future traffic needs due to anticipated growth and traffic generated from private development. The plan, if they finish this and get it on the books with council's approval, the plan would allow the city to require developers to install roadway improvements as needed due to traffic impact of their development. You know, we've talked about this a few times when we've had PUDs before us. And sometimes they'll make an improvement as part of the negotiation, but it's not required. You know, the cutouts, the curb outs and stuff, yeah, they've done that as part of negotiation. But this would put it on the books that they would be required if the traffic engineer identified a new PUD, right, that would impact more tra more traffic to that area. Whereas now we can't mandate it, right, Brian?
No, we can still mandate traffic, any impacts to traffic. So generally, and I'll give you my planner's version of what the engineers do. They submit a study. The study looks at the level of service of those intersections at a baseline of what it is today. And then they anticipate what their traffic needs would look like once their development is fully built out. And they they base all their improvements required based on that. I think what this is saying, you know, what other municipalities have is an actual study of our streets that the city creates or has a consultant that creates. That then we have another baseline that we can work off of, which right now we don't have. Because I think the next portion of that says, no transportation plan has ever been completed for the city that can be used for this purpose. So right now, we don't have this plan. It would help, I think it would help our team or at least the engineers when they're reviewing PUDs. But I think this is also reflective of this is what you guys do all the time. That's why you might feel like this is probably a very important piece of this puzzle. But I don't want to put words in your mouth.
And I I think building off that is like Brian said, the developer will come in and say, we're not making it any worse. Right? And then they can be like, okay, we move on. And this is going to help identify areas where it's already bad to begin with that we can say, there's a need here to make an improvement over even an existing condition from what it is. And so I I feel like it's probably a pretty important piece for for the city to have. And I think probably as Brian noted, that's probably because we deal with it probably more than just about any one of these other pieces on on what we review on a weekly basis or monthly basis or whatever that ends up being. Go Carl.
So the traffic light they're talking about on Oxford and Fox, they're they're getting a lot of support on that. They they want to put a either a traffic light in there or the flashing lights and probably a traffic light. That that'd be like 150,000 right there, right? Would that be included in this fund?
I don't know the project you're speaking of specifically. I think this fund would just be for a plan, not for any specific projects. If you saw project needs this, what this helps our staff do is when a new project comes in, it identifies where they might need improvements or help can help us identify where they might need improvements based on their studies, whether it's new signals, changes to, you know, the striping on the street or additional turn lanes, things of that nature. I think with the Sam's Automotive case, we saw a lot of that was additional requirements. The Five Field Project down on Jason Street, there were additional traffic improvements. I don't know necessarily about the MRA projects. They were a little bit before my time. I don't think there was much traffic improvements required with those as much as there might have been utilities or like hike and bike or walk and wheel, sorry, hike and bikes in Old City, walk and wheel. So this one's just, I think, specifically towards a plan, kind of giving us that baseline of here's what we have now or here's what we need.
The Sports Authority or the, I call it Sports Authority apartment down there, they promised to put out some of the traffic calming, the the bubble out, whatever they call them. They were gonna put those in on Jason to slow down the and to limit the car the traffic through there because there was a lot of complaints about traffic going from Hampton to Oxford down Jason. Anyway, but that would be the developer was supposed to pay for that. He promised to pay for that. It hasn't happened, but it's.
Right, so with a PUD, any of those improvements, they're not required to be installed until the first CO is issued. They don't have a CO to occupy the building. So they still have time, sorry, they still have time to install those improvements. So that's generally what when you see our recommendations coming from the planning planning staff and the city staff, that's part of that recommendation, that all these additional things have to happen before we give them permission to occupy their building to the general public.
I'd like to see this one move up in priority again, as Brian was saying, because this is like core to what this commission, you know, does. So having this information available to city staff would make it easier for us to perform the function that we're here to perform. So to me, this, you know, is should it would be helpful for us as the P and Z Commission to say, this is really important to the P and Z Commission, specific to our function.
Brenda, too, yeah, so.
Oh, I was just gonna to clarify, Brian, that $250,000 is for a consultant, I take it, or a team of people to come in and and put a plan together for us?
I don't know if it specifies whether it's gonna be done in-house or if it's a consultant. See, I don't have that specific information.
But I I think it's it's a need that I think we all recognize, and so I think we put it at the 250 and move on. Okay.
250,000 is for traffic that's not gonna do anything.
Well, it's just a plan. It's it's not any implementation of it. So it's a plan to figure out what we would need to do to implement it. And and I think the thought process is that we could pass off some of those costs to developers as they come in and and try. When they do redevelop, we can say, hey, you're gonna need to, much like the Oxford Bridge, you're gonna need to contribute funding towards that.
Painting or whatever.
Okay, so leave the 250, okay, and move on. Okay. All right, Energy Efficient Project, I think we've we've hit on that one. Let's skip it for now. I think we're at the 117 right now. Library, single exit feasibility, construction. I know the feasibility study in construction, but I think they did the study already, if I'm not mistaken. And I think I feel like, again, that's a safety item. not mistaken, and I think, um, I, I feel like, again, that's a safety item, um, and trying to implement that plan that's been in there for a while. I, I would like to see that one go forward. Brenda?
Would you?
I, I, well, because of Civic Center, is that, is that your concern, putting any money into?
Yeah, it's, it's like, I haven't seen the plan, but I'm not gonna dis it. I know that, that this is to actually do, uh, the construction to just a single entrance on, I guess, the side that goes out this way, but we do still just have one single exit at this time, and although I do believe this also includes, um, emergency exits. Was that right?
Yes, that's correct. It adds emergency exits in a couple places where there aren't any.
There's a line fifty, page fifty-four down here, seventy on the side, uh, for others who want to see.
I, I think we should just not even do it, but that's, I'll leave it.
And again, your reasoning for not doing it is putting any money into this building. This is kind of your justification. Okay. Other thoughts? I hear what you are saying. I don't like putting money into here too, but if it, again, emergency exits, renovation project for safety inconvenience, yeah.
Yeah, I know. See, if there's no emergency exits, we should probably have never done this to begin with, made that delivery. We should just get out of this building, but yeah, you would really hate something.
It's gonna cost a lot more than a hundred and thirty thousand to get out of this building.
Yeah, well, we'll, we can sell this building for millions. You know that? Millions. Um, but, um, you know, we'll just leave it. Let's just leave it and keep going down and see where we end up. Maybe we can get some help.
Well, maybe this is another highlight, the row. How's that sound? And we can come, I don't think this is gonna be, I think this is gonna be an all or nothing because it's that project, but let's, let's see where we're at as we continue on down. Um, how about at eight thirty in eight minutes, maybe we take a quick break? Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Take a ten minute break and come back and, and go again? Okay. Uh, let's see here. Arterio on Collector Street, pavement maintenance, five hundred thousand.
What page is that on in our packet?
That's an excellent question. I'm looking right now. It is, I believe, page forty-seven on the, the packet forty-seven. Um, pavement maintenance, is that?
You're right.
There's two that are very close to the same name. Oh, that's Collector Streets. Okay, yeah, okay. So, yeah, page forty-seven. So additional funding to repave arterials and collectors. Let's see here. We did completely cut that funding, uh, last year. Just a side note.
I, I'm not in favor of completely cutting it, but I would be in favor of reducing it from the half million number. Um, you know, I think there's already a lot of other line items related to road maintenance, road reconstruction. Um, and I, I also just generally, especially on these arterial and collector streets, I would like to see us, uh, spending the money in ways that are aligned with, uh, you know, ch- changing the, uh, traffic patterns to increase safety and, you know, so just dropping five hundred thousand to just repave the streets, to me is not a priority. That, that, to me, would not be the way I would prioritize spending that money.
Maybe, uh, some better decisions could be made once we could be informed by the transportation master plan.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, if we, we complete it, cut it, we completely cut it last year, at least give them maybe half of that to start with. It seems from the table, though, that there's some humongous maintenance issues coming up in twenty twenty-seven, because a jump is just enormous.
I would say, I, I do feel like the reality of continually deferring the maintenance is going to make it more expensive later. I'd like to fund this in some way, shape or form, but maybe we cut it from the five hundred. Um, maybe not completely, maybe what about three hundred?
Yeah, three hundred sounds good.
Sure. Seems like a good reasonable number. Okay. That is line thirteen, uh, Nancy, three hundred thousand, please. All right, sidewalk gap construction. Thank you. Page thirty-two. Get in there. Perfect. Keep it a line here.
Question, maybe?
Please, yeah.
Are, when there's development projects in the city, is there like a fee collected for some sort of pot of money for sidewalk projects, or, um, are developers responsible for sidewalks adjacent to properties? How does that work?
They're, um, they're only responsible for the sidewalks adjacent to their development. So what's, what, what's in front of their property? And the new code, trying to remember what exactly we did. We put in kind of a tiered requirement as far as whether they have to meet, like, the existing pavement width, or, you know, we have a lot of streets where we have sidewalks at the curb or sidewalks, um, inset a little bit, like five feet, whatever that number is. And so the new code gives them kind of some flexibility if they're smaller, like infill development, rather than if you're a full block development, you have to rebuild the whole thing. But smaller infill development projects have some different allowances, but you're generally just responsible for what's in between your property lines.
Thank you. Um, so with this sidewalk connection, is that meant to sort of connect those gaps between that piece, no infill development kind of stuff, or how does that?
Yeah, I think it, it is intended to put in sidewalks where there aren't any. I don't know if it's necessarily in between developments, it's just as much as, we're just where there aren't, aren't any right now. Um, this says no civic center and no D D A, uh, downtown, or downtown development area. Um, you know, I think, one maybe follow-up question, um, from Camille is if, if there's non-standard, they have to put in their sidewalk width, and then outside of that, do they just go back to the old three-foot width or two-foot width or whatever that ends up being currently?
Yeah, I think the developer normally plans like a transition, so it's not just, you know, our sidewalk stops and then the sidewalk shifts over. They usually transition back and forth. But again, that's generally just geared towards smaller infill projects so that they're not having to rebuild an entire block or the street, or the sidewalk, because that generally, that kind of cost on a small project makes it not feasible. So we wanted to build in some flexibility for that.
What was spent before on this?
Last year, we cut this also. And again, I, I don't know what the final, to clarify, these were our recommendations. Um, I don't know what the final, uh, budget ended up being. So, um, I don't know if that impacts what, uh, what that decision is, but we did end up cutting it last year. Again, probably because, well, we, we did have, we had much less money last year, I will tell you that. I, I think we ended up using, we had some excess in the general fund, if I'm not mistaken, was where we ended up coming up with some more money. So I do think we have a little more flexibility this year, it feels like at least. Is that an accurate statement?
I, I can't remember what the dollar amount was last year.
Yeah, I mean, what I, I was showing, we were shooting for five million dollars last year. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Keep in mind that this year's number includes the contingency excess.
Yeah, that, that excess funding.
Not just the, um, fu- funds we get for the C I P and the P I V.
Right, which I think is why we have a little bit more to play with this year. So I, I think it's some, maybe something that we could consider. Go ahead, Carl.
I'd say two fifty or three hundred on this one, and, uh, we don't want to end up like Denver. We want, want to keep some money in there definitely.
So change line fourteen sidewalk gap construction to two fifty?
Yeah, I agree on that.
Sound good?
Yeah.
And I feel like that's a great place to take a, let's take a ten minute break. Does that sound good for everyone? Um, that we're, we're moving through here. We're at least over a third of the way, if not further, because I think as we get lower down the line, we're gonna just realize we're gonna have to cut some of these things. So ten minutes, get back here at eight forty. Does that sound good? Okay, thanks.
You're currently at eight point eight million.
Eight point eight?
Yes.
The, eight point eight to line twenty-seven?
Correct.
Okay, which is where we kind of had the, the cutoff before. Um, there are some things down here that you'd wanted to move up, but that's a great note, Nancy, to understand where we're at. So we're, we're doing good. I mean, that's, that's better than, than being over. I think we still probably should consider each one of these line items going down and, and figure out what the right number is, and then, um, if we need to, be able to go back and put some more money in if we can.
The, uh, the further we go, the less priority the, uh.
Exactly, yeah, that's what I think it'll be.
We can cut them more.
Yeah, it'll be a little easier, be like, eh, all of it gone, eh. Yeah, I, I feel like as we get through these first, really, so we've gone through eighteen, is that right? No, fourteen, I'm sorry. Uh, fourteen right now, and I really think we probably, at least the first twenty-eight are, are priorities for us. So halfway. All right, ten minutes. All right, 10 minutes. (audio cuts out) I think we are just about ready to get back going again. On line number 15. Security Civic Center and Rec Center. Nancy, just to confirm, as far as you know, we're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So Security Civic Center, Rec Center, we got $20,000. I mean, I feel like, can we just say yes and move on?
Yes.
Okay, done. ADA Compliance Projects. I think those are obviously separate from ADA ramps, but I think it's, again, one of those things that Brian's probably gonna... 64. Page 64. So once efficiencies are identified in an ADA assessment, then go through and kind of implementing these. Sidewalks, crosswalks, city buildings, also in parking lots, okay. Okay, so I don't know if there's anything for Civic Center here. Brenda?
No.
Okay. With that, I feel like it's probably something that is good to fund. They had requested $100,000 last year, and we did cut it out last year, but since we've already made some cuts and we're a little bit under right now, maybe, do we make this $100,000 since we cut it last year?
Yeah, let's give them the 100 they asked for last year.
100, okay. So Nancy, line...
Wait a second, wait a second.
Yeah, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Talking about line 16?
Correct.
ADA Compliance Projects?
That's correct.
So what do you want to do?
Hold on a second.
I would recommend that we keep it at $150,000. I think we're under right now, and, you know, I give grace that I'm not in a wheelchair, and anybody that is, I think that, you know, they should have, or anyone that's handicapped should have accessibility to everything else that the rest of us do. So I would recommend that we keep it in there 150 and look to cut somewhere else if needed.
I'll agree with that.
Anyone else? Thoughts? I'm okay keeping 150 and moving on? All right, keep 150, move on, okay. Street reconstruction. I know these are all different, but it always feels like they're the exact same when we talk about the road and bridge. And, all right, so this is page 24. Full-depth reconstruction of street pavements. So these are, I'm assuming, all the side streets as opposed to the one that is a few lines off. Line 13 is arterial and collector's street pavement maintenance. This is just street reconstruction for full-depth reconstruction.
Yeah, so the Director Rochelle talked about it. The reason this is separated out is this is where the street is fully scraped and rebuilt as opposed to just fixing the pavement that already exists. So this is for those roads that have heavy truck traffic and other causes of significant damage that warrant the full-depth reconstruction.
Like they did on Broadway?
I think so. I think so, yeah, like they did on Broadway. For me, I mean, again, I don't know what the right number is here, but, you know, putting the planning and zoning hat on more than the budget hat, you know, I would like to know more about, I guess, what we're doing as a city to ensure that businesses that are driving the heavy trucks over these areas and causing the damage that leads to full-depth reconstruction, you know, how we're sort of making sure those costs are fairly allocated. I'd be up for reducing this number so that we could get a couple of the priorities that got cut up, but again, I don't know enough about how much road we're talking, you know, what you get for $500,000 of full-depth reconstruction, so I don't know what's reasonable here.
I'm going to guess it's probably not a lot. So, you know, I think last year and some of the previous years, we had maybe specific projects that were identified for full reconstruction. I'm not actually seeing this line item in last year's list. I feel like I thought I did, but maybe I'm just not seeing it. But, you know, I think, again, we're trying to make sure we're not just kicking the can down the road, but I don't disagree with you of maybe allocating money into different places that emphasize more of the multimodal or even just an understanding of what impacts come from different businesses. So I'd be okay cutting this, you know, at some point, but I'm not sure if anybody has a number that they'd like to throw out as a conversation starter.
I'd stay with, cut $100,000 if any at all.
Okay.
So 400 or 500,000?
400. All right.
I would bring it down to 300.
Okay.
I guess another curiosity I have on this one is where the, like, what the plan is and how the streets that they're gonna do this are picked. I feel like I've seen some reconstruction in some more affluent areas of Inglewood, and I'm curious why there and why not other places.
Perhaps the traffic plan, citywide transportation plan would help guide that a little bit. So maybe we, since we're gonna do that plan next year, maybe we do cut this down, maybe let's say 350, cut it in the middle, the three to four. All right, so Nancy, line 17, can we make 350,000, please?
How are we doing on the total?
Well, total, total versus to line 27, we're at 8.6, is that right? I think that's gonna double count the 8 million in there, so I think we're at 10 million right now. Is that state 19? Do you want to maybe, can you do a secondary total for the lines past our subtotal?
The, towards the end, there's smaller amounts, but they're easier to cut. It looks like we're not quite where we need to be.
Yeah, I agree. I think we've still got a little bit of ways to go. All right, so that's 2.5 plus, what are we, 8 point something? 8.6? So 11.1 right now? It's 2.1 over...
We have to be at 9, yeah.
So there's some smaller numbers to start cutting down below as well. So I think at some point, the numbers below are just gonna go away. We'll maybe move a few of them up, but I think those will mostly end up having to zero out based on this priority. So I think trying to cut still places where we think it makes sense is gonna be important. So I think we said 350 for line 17? Okay, facilities in operation, we talked about, so maybe we skip over, but just as a reminder, we put that at 1.5 million. We kind of met in the middle, if you will, actually, not even really in the middle. Gave them some money more, and I think, again, maybe being cognizant of the reality that we do have a little bit more money this year, and there are a lot of needs at our facilities. And maybe with a note, just for anybody listening, that Brenda does not want to put any of that money towards Civic Center. And I don't think I do either, to be perfectly honest, so fair statement?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all right, let's move it on from 1.5. All right, so line 19 is the implementation of the traffic calming. Yeah, a discussion on this, I have some thoughts, but I'd love to hear others.
So I actually spoke in public comment at City Council meeting a couple months back about traffic safety around schools. I think we have a lot of neighborhood roads in Inglewood that are very wide, and there's very fast traffic through some school areas, and I think implementing this, to me, is a no-brainer. It's absolutely something we need to do.
Cool, thank you. Others?
I would agree with that. I ranked that pretty high on my, when we filled out the spreadsheet.
Any other thoughts? Go ahead, Brenda.
I was gonna say, I want, we want to keep it, but what are your thoughts? You said you had...
Yeah, I did. I mean, I think it's another one of those challenging ones. We had, I think, some roundabouts in previous years and things like that, and I'm trying to understand maybe where this is going. I think it's important also, just, again, to protect our neighborhoods and the children around them, and I agree that our streets are way too wide, and so we could probably do something here. So I'm okay keeping it at 250 if others are, and I don't know that my opinion means anymore, so if we're all in agreement of 250, I'm good with that, yeah. Okay, all right, cool, moving on. Audiovisual upgrades. It's not a huge number, it's 30,000. You know, it feels like it's...
So this is like screens and things like that, or...
No, it's, the man is recording us right now, these cameras.
It's line 60 or page 61? Just sorry.
Yeah, look at the page, but I can just tell you from experience that sometimes it's hard to bring people in from Zoom meetings, like if one of the council members... I think that they also wanted to upgrade the server that all this stuff goes, is stored on. I think that's what they talked about. I might have that confused with another IT thing, but I thought that's what he explained.
What page is that?
Page 61, yeah. I think it's trying to keep everything moderate and stuff changes so frequently. You know, we spent a lot of money getting this to where it's at, and I think that's important, and it's, you know, about testability for the entire community if they can't make it down here, and the ability to be able to hear us.
Plus 30,000, yes. I mean...
They're, a month ago, their city council meetings were having lots of trouble. They didn't have audio, they didn't have video, there was something wrong with almost every meeting for a month straight. So 30,000, that's probably not gonna fix it, but give them 30,000, let's...
Carl, I agree with you. There was a couple of times that I was at city council meetings and they had to be postponed when there was some pretty big topics to discuss, and then other times I've been watching city council meetings on the live stream, and it's darn near impossible to hear some people at those times. So I would say, yeah, let's keep the $30,000 and go on to the next line.
I mean, the other option could be, and I'm not saying that we necessarily have to do this, but we could put more in if we think it's an important part. Just as a reminder, you know, these aren't necessarily, we can adjust it if we think it's an important one. I don't know if this is the case on this one, but maybe just as a note if there is something that, you know, we think, you know, when you look at alley maintenance or something like that, or alley repairs, or something else, you know. But for this one in particular, are we thinking just 30,000 and move on?
Yeah, and I think if, you know, depending on how they do in terms of fixing the equipment for this year or next, then we can move it up if we see that there's still meetings that are not being heard well and so forth, you know.
Brian, do we have a feel for how accurate these requests are for budget, requested budget to actual needed to spend?
Oh, I certainly do not. None of these come out of my department, so I don't have any extra info on any of that as far as what's actually gonna cost these projects.
How about you, Nancy? Do you have any idea?
No, when the directors were here last, two weeks ago, they would have been able to answer that, but no, as Brian said...
Okay.
We're staffed to the commission, we're not privy to all of the ins and outs of these projects.
Well, let's keep it at 30,000 and move forward then.
Okay, moving on. Signal equipment upgrades. I think this is where your note was, Carl, about how many upgrades that 300,000 would get you. I think you noted that earlier, it's not very many.
For the what?
Signal equipment upgrades or replacements, line 20.
We cut, kind of, last year, I think we cut them pretty drastic, so I don't know if we want to cut too much, but we can, 300,000, we can take 100,000 off of that.
Page 37 or 34?
37.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's traffic signal replacement, okay.
I think we can cut that a little bit, maybe?
So they had requested 175,000 last year, and we did cut that out completely of our proposal.
155 last year?
175 last year was the request? So maybe going on that same thought of before, do we give them 175 this year?
Yeah.
Year two?
I think that's a good idea.
I'd like to go a little higher than that. I think this is something with a safety impact and, you know, so I'd be comfortable with maybe 250. 200 to 250 would be preferable for me.
225, how's 225 sound for everyone? Sound good? That's a good round number. All right, Nancy, line...
Do I hear a 210?
Yeah. Line 21, please, making 225,000.
I'm sorry, my numbers, I lost my numbers. How much was that? 225?
225 for line 21, please.
1,000, okay, thank you.
All right, the neighborhood traffic calming program, I think was to finish the study?
No, what that is, if I recall, maybe, correct me, but they want to create a program...
I'm sorry, Brenda, could you put your mic on? Thank you.
Sorry, the neighborhood traffic calming program is where citizens can request that their neighborhood be looked at for a traffic calming initiative. So like, they do live across the street from the school, they're like, we want our school to be first, this needs it really bad, or, you know, we want speed bumps over here off Dartmouth. So anyway, it's like a program, and the traffic engineer kind of explained it when we met with him at the utility tour. Anyway, that's what that is.
So it is establishing that program to allow for kind of an understanding, again, similar, I think, to the citywide transportation plan, it would be a way to understand what the needs are. It would be a way to understand what the needs are, um, which well, I, I think is important, you know, is it something we'd wanna maybe try to request to split into two years? Is it something we just go forward with this year? Any thoughts in, in that context?
I'd like to leave it where it is, I think that this is the initial development and launching of the program, and um you can see that there's not out-year requests here, so I think this is a reasonable amount to, to get this program off the ground.
No, I would say I think there was a discussion of if we are developing the program here with line twenty-two, that maybe we wouldn't have enough time to implement a lot of stuff, so maybe we wouldn't need that two fifty in the first year. So, I mean, is there, maybe do we reduce the implementation line nineteen by a hundred thousand? Um, so we can develop the program and then start implementing it at, so that kind of those two together would be two fifty. Again, just a thought, just, you know, for consideration.
Yeah, I think there's, that's a good idea to merge, 'cause, you know, they, based on the title of the both item, line items, they seem to have some sort of connection, so.
Now, I, I would, I would agree with that, with uh maybe lowering nineteen, uh finding some money there, so we can add some more stuff further on down, and um keeping the uh, well, what you suggested, keeping the new program, uh just to get it off the ground.
I, I'd prefer to keep them both where they are. I think the um two hundred and fifty thousand, when you're talking about implementation um of traffic calming measures, uh, you know, it, it's gonna be pretty limited in what you could do with that amount, so I would um prefer to keep them where they are.
My, my only thought on that is, will we have time to implement it if we're still trying to figure out the plan for next year? Then, you know, this is a one-time ask of a hundred thousand versus they're asking for two fifty every year on line nineteen, maybe it's even two hundred thousand, or you take part of it, you know? Again, just trying to be able to find money for some of these other items as well.
Why, why are they not asking for anything past next year?
Uh, line twenty-one, no, I'm sorry, which line am I on? Where the heck did I, I just lost it. Line twenty-two, neighborhood traffic calming program is asking for a hundred thousand this year and then zero past that.
Because they're just, it's just implementing the program, trying to, getting the word out and putting it online, you know, people will have a, a place to go, it's just a one-time cost just to set the program, which is why I think in the first year, we're not gonna need as much money, like the two hundred and fifty for line nineteen, just the first year, because people really won't know about it, and we could possibly then put more money towards it as the need grows. Uh, they don't really know um how much traffic calming they're gonna need until they talk to people, so that's why I think we could, we could lower line nineteen by a hundred thousand and just put it towards apply, you know, put that hundred thousand in towards um getting this program off the, off the ground.
Oh, kind of what I'm thinking is do fifty thousand there, and then fifty thousand for the, basically every year past that. I mean, once you calm down the traffic, you're not done. The cars are gonna speed up.
Yeah, and that's, I think, line nineteen is your, your implementation of those items, you're right, I mean, I think once you've calmed it, are you saying it's not done at that point, and you would have, can, kind of further? Maybe, can you repeat what you were saying? I'm trying to interpret it, and I shouldn't do that, so.
They have uh two or three circles planned for Dartmouth, and there's also one planned for Floyd right out here, so that's way above the hundred thousand, so I'm not sure what this hundred thousand would be used for.
So the hundred thousand is to create the policy in the program itself, not to do any improvements. The other pot of money that, two, is it two fifty, three fifty?
Correct, two fifty.
That is to actually implement, if, the way I understand Victor's um assessment, a citizen calls in, says there's an issue of speeding in their neighborhood, the city goes out and studies it, or does whatever they need, to set up the policy, and I, I wasn't completely clear on that either, uh but to set up the internal policy of how that system works is where the hundred thousand comes from. That other pot is, if they find an issue, here's where, where they have the money to actually go put in some form of improvement out there to try to fix or alleviate the issue.
Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily have to be construction, sometimes it's just those blinking signs that say, slow down, you know, so I don't, I think we could take something, we could take a hundred off, hundred thousand off line nineteen, just the first year.
As maybe one other piece of reference, the East Dartmouth traffic calming that you had talked about, uh, the request was for two hundred thousand last year, we gave them two hundred thousand, so I, I believe that's a two hundred thousand dollar cost for, for that project, which is already gonna be implemented, it might, that might be part, partially some grants, I'm not positive of that, but.
So, I think, well, I don't know if that would be included here, but uh the speed limit signs, you know, the electronic radar signs, you're, you're going so fast, those are pretty uh. They're effective, you start flashing when you're over the speed limit, flashing the red and blue lights, like a cop car lights.
They're effective, I think, for a while until people realize that they're there, and then, you know, it does take, I think, uh, maybe a secondary, every once in a while, someone's hanging out, out there, but I think, I, I agree, Carl, I, I know there's one on Old Hampden that I can tell people are slowing down because of it now, which is fantastic.
And that, that's what the, the council was talking about on the uh, the crosswalk at Fox and uh Oxford, the, the traffic's so bad down there that, that when they do try to cross it, they gotta wait forever for a clearing for those people that are there, and that's getting a lot of uh approval from the council.
Sure, and I think that could be considered as part of the, I would assume that could be part of these traffic calming implementation, so maybe to, to kind of balance it, maybe we make nineteen, two hundred, keep a hundred there, that doesn't cut us down a hundred, but it cuts us down a little bit for the implementation, does that seem reasonable? Okay, uh, Nancy, we're gonna change line nineteen to two hundred thousand, please? Alright, line twenty-three, streetlights and furniture repair and replacement. Now I think we're starting to get into maybe some more uh. Yeah, I, I, you know, great things to have, but, you know, is it, is it really necessary as we're trying to cut other things? Maybe, actually, real quick, before we do that, let's know, did you have a thought that you wanted to? Yeah, go for it.
I was just gonna say, I, I think fifty thousand for this is very reasonable, I think when you look, you're, you're talking about sort of the, you know, stretch of, of Broadway that um, you know, has a, a lot of sort of placemaking intent around um that area, and, and being able to keep those things in, in good condition really makes the area, you know, just a more pleasurable place to be, generates a lot of business activity, um, you know, and so I think fifty thousand for this is very reasonable.
And I think, like you noted, it is, uh, it's page thirty-nine, so it is um Broadway Street Furniture, which I, I think is a kind of a spotlight for our community, I think it's a, it's a great place to um be able to highlight and, and continue to invest in, I think it helps the whole community, even um, you know, I, I, I think their benefits that extend past even that corridor. So maybe we're, we're okay leaving at fifty, okay. So with that said, just real quick status check, can you look at line uh twenty-seven and see where we're at for these numbers, where, that eight point three, eight point five?
Wow.
Okay, um, and then for the remainder, would we have two point five? So we're at eleven million, so we save, yeah, 'cause we cut a hundred thousand. Two point five, okay, so again, I think there's still some items that we're gonna need to continue to discuss, and maybe some things that we'll wanna bring up from below line twenty-seven, um, but that was where we were at before, so um unless, so any further discussion, just keep moving on? Okay, public art, raps and crosswalks. Um, I'm a little surprised that this ranked up as high as it did, uh but I'm not, I, here's the thing, I think it's great, a hundred thousand dollars for it, feels like a lot of money for raps.
I, yeah, I did not put this at a high priority, I would have cut this. I mean, it's really neat, I love them, but yeah, as a priority, as a safety feature and all that, it's, it's just not.
It's page ten, for those who wanted to look at it. It does say, uh, vibrant crosswalks transform cityscape, fostering places sense and, place, sense of place and encouraging active participation, research indicates significant reduction in pedestrian-related accidents. Just for the safety side of it, for consideration, yeah, Camille?
Well, I would say, which would you rather have, wayfinding and placemaking, or, and the crosswalks are just decorative, they're just replacing crosswalks with, like, you know, the fork knife spoon thing, and like, we do have one on Jason that's Dougie Prince. Um, I just don't think it's that, I would rather have, if we had, I would rather move something up below than that, that's just my take.
Camille, you had something?
Maybe we could highlight it, I um, I agree, maybe not a hundred thousand, and, and maybe it's not the highest priority, but I do think it has um a little bit of placemaking value and probably some economic stimulation value. I think it would be cool to see, but a hundred thousand is probably too much.
Other thoughts, Noah, did you have yours on too?
I was just gonna say, I, you know, I, I'd be in, in favor of keeping this, and I think at this point, we're at eight point five, we have room to potentially move some things up, which is great. So I would just say, we maybe don't need to be super hasty to make cuts, um, you know, if we wanna reduce the number, that's fine, but I would definitely say I would be against removing it entirely.
Maybe let's split it between twenty-five and twenty-six, make it fifty each year.
So put it, yeah, 'cause there's another request in the future, let's make, okay, I like that, let's make twenty, line twenty-four, fifty thousand, please? Uh, library furniture, I think this is to kind of help sanitize and keep things up to date. Um, again, it's in, in this building, um.
I'll tell you from experience, it is old, and it's falling apart, and, 'cause I go to the book club, and the tables are really wonky, so yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, it's not that much.
It feels like a lot for furniture, but I, I know that, I feel like the old funny dice, thirty thousand dollars. Yeah, um, maybe, I, I'm not feeling, I'm not sensing any push to reduce it, so do we just leave it as it is then? Okay, 'cause it did rank up there, I think this is probably one that in pre, previous years without this ranking, maybe we would have cut it, because it would have gone down lower, so there we go. Alright, walk and wheel implementation, um, also again, probably um things that, you know, we are trying to focus on as a community, um but love to get others' input on two hundred and forty-five thousand for, for this year's walk and wheel implementation, line twenty-six.
What page is that on?
It's slide, yeah, slide twenty-six, page forty-two. The page numbers that say of eighty-seven, it's page forty-two. I mean, the short version is, this is sidewalks and bike lanes, and um I'm in favor of keeping it the same.
Same.
I don't see any reason to cut that.
Okay, any other thoughts on it? Sold, two forty-five, okay. Uh, facility backup generators. Um, go ahead.
Oh, I think this is pretty critical, I mean, I, there was a pretty big freakout this year when we had some power outages, and it um, and this is a one-time, is this one-time cost, right? Well, where is uh?
No, I do think.
Nine twenty-five, then they've got three hundred thousand, I'll bet you that's for um gas, maintenance.
So it's page sixty-seven or eighty-three, depending on the page numbers, um says service center, Malle Senior Center, uh, Coma Fire Department, Englewood Rec Center, do not have any backup. So, um, I think, I think the recognition that we probably are going to see more rolling type of blackouts is probably uh an important realization that, you know, especially if these are going to be places for, you know, sheltering in place and things like that, it, it's probably important that, that these, I, I, I'm glad that we're able to keep it at nine twenty-five, I think is where I would, I'd like to keep it if, if others agree. Sounds like we've got nothing. Okay, so with that, we are at eight point four six, is that right? Okay, which means we've got five hundred thousand dollars to play with, um, to move either lines up or add to ones that we had cut above. I think, um, let's, let's maybe, before we go too far, line thirty-six has to get moved up.
Yeah, that, that gets spent no matter what, so.
So if there's a way to maybe, I'm not sure how you wanna do this, Nancy, but if you can move line thirty-six up. Yeah, I think, yeah. Yep, perfect, okay, um. Thank you. Yeah, so that wasn't a huge impact, 'cause it was forty thousand. Um, I think you noted, and I think Michelle would definitely support, and I think I would support as well, uh, emerald ash orb, or ash for mitigation. Um, I think it's important for our, our trees and our community to try to protect those. Does everyone feel okay with moving line thirty-one up as well?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Same.
Alright, now we have some maybe more difficult ones, are there other ones that um people are seeing in this list that they'd like to discuss considering moving up as well? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of moving up the wayfinding and placemaking, it's, you know, was the next one down after the cut here, um, and um I really like the direction the city's been going with the wayfinding and placemaking efforts, and I wanna make sure we continue to support that. Um, and I also think the um PC replacement uh is potentially one that we should consider. I think it's important to make sure that the city staff has the IT that they need to do their jobs, and uh having them, you know, use uh devices that are, that are aging is not a good way to keep your experienced staff happy, um, so those are a couple that I would point to.
Any objections to those two moving up? I don't.
The first one was line twenty-eight, which is the wayfinding and placemaking, so right below the cut there. And then the other one is line thirty, the PC replacement, those were the two I discussed.
I could, I would like to see, um, if we add wayfinding and placemaking, I would like to see about half that amount, and PC replacement, and then allocate almost the rest of that money to, uh, you see IT network development there has a big ask, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we're not gonna be able to do that, but I do think that we need to throw some more, if you look at the list up above, we've only given uh IT um thirty thousand dollars for the, for the audio visual, um, oh, that's not true, that gets the patrol cars and the security cameras. So, yeah, I think we need um to allocate, um, like I said, wayfinding and placemaking, lots of fun, um, we could do that for about half, and then throw the rest at IT.
Yeah, I will say that we put seventy-five K towards a hundred and fifty K request for network development IT last year, um, I'd like to be able to put money towards that, it is a higher priority from the directors, again, I think due to the way the scoring was presented, it inherently was reduced because it's not a transportation type of a project, which um I think is one of those things that we're just gonna need to kind of work through as we're doing that scoring matrix, um, maybe those have to be separately ranked, because uh I feel a little bad for the IT and communications, and really parks and recs, um, so um, I, I'd like to at least maybe put two hundred towards network development IT and move that up, I don't know if others have a different number in thought? Alright, so line thirty-two, if we can make two hundred thousand and move it up um above the cut line? And then I believe also after that, we would move wayfinding and placemaking. I wouldn't have my feelings hurt if we cut that a little bit, but maybe we see, once we move the whole thing up where we're at. So moving line 28 then, yep, up above the cut line as well. I think then we're right at 100, so we still have 135 left. Okay. Yep.
Let's go back to the highlighted areas before we add anything else below the, the initial cut line.
That, that's great. Um, okay, yeah, let's do that. That, that sounds good. Do we, so we highlighted a few items, um, so we kept the, we, if I'm not mistaken, on these, we kept all the highlighted where they originally were requested. So we kept 375 for the patrol cars, so that's good. Library, we kept that number. Are there, are just those two, Nancy? Are there any others that are highlighted?
Not above your blue line subtotal. You were talking about PC, IT, you know, the PC replacement. So I highlighted that, didn't know what you wanted to do with that.
Yeah, we're.
I think we're, we're showing it as included for both of those right now. So we're showing the 375 for patrol cars and the full 125 for PC replacements.
No, the PC, PC replacement is currently not above your subtotal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, and you're keeping it at 125 right now?
We already hit that, actually, that's, that's the final number, final countdown. 999, 8999? Eight, is that 8980?
So, so no network development? We're not going to give anything?
We did do network development for 200,000.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
8990.
I'd, I'd say we're done then.
Yeah, I mean, I, is there any other ones? Eric, I think that was great to go back up and remind us of those. Any of these other items that we feel like we need to move up?
Maybe we could toss the rest back into wayfinding?
I would actually say we took a lot from the facilities and operations, so, you know, I would probably just throw another 10,000 or whatever we have, just, you know, there.
Yeah, because we, we're at 1.5 million in facilities in operation. Out of the two, well, actually, it's probably the energy efficiency was the one that we really cut, but.
Yeah, I think the facilities and operations, though, is probably, there, there's probably less discretionary there and there's more sort of debt for not, you know, doing some of those projects.
So I, I'm fine putting that in there just to get to that final number. And then I, I think if everyone's okay with that, then we say thank you to staff again.
So I'm sorry, what do you want to change facilities?
Uh, 150, 00, yeah, add 10,000 to it. Yeah, 1510, thank you. 151, yep, perfect. And then do I just double check our number? Oh, now we're $185 over. 159, 1509. How do we get to 185? Where the hell did that come from?
Yeah, it came from the 1%.
Oh, thank you, yeah, great, yeah.
I think, I think this is consistent with our recommendation.
Again, yeah, these are our recommendations. City Council, the final vote on, on these. So I, I, I feel comfortable, if others feel comfortable presenting this as our recommendations to city council.
I need a motion, please.
Okay, uh, so if we could get a motion to approve this budget and, and send to city council.
I second the motion.
Wait, yeah, someone?
Sorry, sorry, who made the motion?
I can't make a motion, is the problem. So if you want to, you want to make it, Eric?
Okay, I've got three people talking, folks. Who made the motion, please?
I make a motion to present this to city council.
Thank you, Eric. I heard a second, I didn't hear the first.
Brenda will make the second. I'll second the motion to present this, the budget to city council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Eric, how do you vote?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Uh, Camille?
Aye.
Noah?
Aye.
And Chair Hagerty?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Uh, not quite done, but we're just about there. I'm sure it will be done very quickly. Staff choice, anything?
The only thing I have is that we have a work session coming up for you at our next meeting on home occupations. There was a work session presented to city council, uh, Monday before last. So if you had the opportunity to watch that prior to, majority of the information we're presenting is either what we presented to them or what we heard from them to you all, so just FYI.
Just to clarify, you asked us to watch the presentation from which meeting?
I'm just letting you know that it's out there. You don't have to. We're going to present the same information to you, but we also will be presenting some of the information that we hear from council, so you can hear some of their discussion from there.
Are you going to want our recommendations, recommendations that evening or will, no, we'll just?
No, so the plan is to gather information from you all. We've got scheduled three neighborhood nights. There's neighborhood nights all summer, but we've scheduled to be, have our staff at the first three, so there's three in June. I want to say the, the sixth, the 13th and the 23rd, 24th, something like that, or 27th. So we'll be at those three gathering public input. We're also working on getting a meeting set with the Chamber of Commerce to present this information to them. Um, and then the plan is to come back to you all, once we've had time, to get your information, the public's information and the Chamber of Commerce, and then kind of come back with more of a draft of what the changes might look like. And then we'd still have to come back to P and Z with an actual ordinance change because this is all in Title 16. So you guys get to make that recommendation to city council.
So was that the city council meeting where they were talking about whether or not you could have a mechanic shop at your home and a barber shop and things of that nature?
That's part of that discussion, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, attorney's choice.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sergio. I'm replacing Vicky. Vicky's still with the city. She's just not going to come to P and Z anymore. And nothing additional for me.
Welcome. I think, you know, you've, uh, we've seen you around, so thank you for your continued support. And I guess tell Vicky that we'll also miss her.
Yeah, so you guys may have seen me for a couple months sitting back there.
Great, uh, great. Commissioner's choice, I'll just go around the room, Carl.
Nothing on the choice, but I, I got a question on how come we did this spreadsheet and then we manually, manually went through it again? I mean, it, it did help that the lower priority stuff, we can get rid of that. But seems like that's a lot of, I don't know how many hours were put into the spreadsheet, but it's got to be quite a bit.
Are you talking about the, the ranking spreadsheet that we all did at home or that we were requested to do at home?
The, the one we did at home, but the, the building of the spreadsheet.
Yep.
Took a lot of work.
Yeah, it did. Um, I'm, and I think it's again to help us really prioritize these things. And I think it will continue to become a better tool as we move forward. And I think maybe we have this initial implementation and the effort and lift to, to create it. And then hopefully in pre, in subsequent years, it'll be an easier task for, for everybody. But I, I don't think you're alone in, in the reality that it was a challenging step this year. But I think anytime you're doing something for the first time, there's going to be some challenges. I think it did help us again understand where some of these lower priorities were going to fall. And so hopefully it ultimately helped us, even though I think it probably took a little time this first one.
Yeah, well, I was thinking that the spreadsheet was all we did. Once we did the spreadsheet, we turned that into council and they went by that. And we, but we still went through it manually.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's to help us get to this, this space, but our, our, our task is to present a budget for these two, um, items. And so I think they wanted, the council wanted that context on why we were funding things over others. But I think ultimately that's not a necess, necessary step. I think it was just to help inform what we were doing here.
So Carl, if I can just reiterate, sorry, council will receive the commission's combined spreadsheet. I took everyone's scores that submitted those and put them into one spreadsheet. That's what Tim and Jenny were talking about tonight. They want to see the data. Council wants to see the data. But they will also receive what you did tonight.
So they'll receive this spreadsheet?
The one you did tonight plus the combined one that has all of your rankings based on the criteria and combined scores.
And that's not going to confuse them?
I can't speak to that, but that's what they've asked for.
They will be presented the information whether they are, you know, and I think they are welcome to ask us questions as well, I would assume, um, to get clarifications. But I think the, again, the rankings are the rankings. We still ultimately need to come up with a, a proposed budget that meets that.
Okay, um, ribbon cutting for the, uh, the train Saturday, I believe. I believe it's this Saturday, nine o'clock at Bellevue Park.
Bellevue Park, that's how I was going to say which location, but. Thanks, Carl. It's great. Steve? Good. Camille?
Nothing for me.
Eric? Noah?
Nothing for me.
And Brenda?
I'm good, thank you.
As am I. Uh, thank you, and I think we can adjourn. Okay, thanks all. Thank you all, yay.